October 12th, 2020, virtual, regular, meaning voting, public meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies of which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Now pursuant to newly promulgated emergency regulations, I need to read the following notice about procedures at this meeting. Here we go. During this meeting, we will be force muting all microphones apart from board members, from Dr. Taylor, anyone giving a presentation, and anyone giving a public comment. Excuse me, at at least two points that will have public comment periods. If at that time you wish to speak, please raise your blue virtual hand in Zoom and wait for me to call on you. We will try to unmute you. If that has not happened, please try to unmute yourself. If you can't raise your virtual hand in Zoom, please just turn on your camera, wave frantically until you are recognized and I'll call on you. New Jersey law requires us to now inform you that all commenters must behave appropriately, meaning no screaming, obscenities, or inappropriate visual displays. In the event of inappropriate behavior, you will be muted, and we will come back to you at a later time. Later in this meeting, under new business, we will discuss new procedures for submitting public comments in writing prior to a virtual public meeting for the board to read into the record out loud during the meeting, excuse me, during the public comment periods of the public meeting. That's it. That is what New Jersey law now requires me to tell you. Linda, could we have a roll call, please? While I take a drink.
Mr. Lassiter?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gallin?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFavendee-Nicola?
Here.
Ms. Prus?
Here.
Mr. Rovitch?
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Thank you so much. Linda and Scott, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yep, let me one second.
Thank you so much.
There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Hofela, were there any communications apart from those listed in the minutes, oh, sorry, on the agenda here?
Not to my recollection, but I did want to remind the board members that the New Jersey School Board's Virtual Workshop is coming up. It will be next week, October 20th through 22nd. Every board member is registered. You should have gotten an email to give you links to access the workshop. If you did not receive an email, please let me know or let my administrative assistant, Jenna Beck, know. Thank you.
Linda, we did not, I did not receive one, and I don't know that anyone else did.
I got something. I'm not sure if it was the right.
I'll take a look.
I didn't try it yet.
Can you send me an email if you did not receive anything?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Marilyn, I've never been. This will be my first year, so I hope that you might be able to join us. It's supposed to be very inspirational and exciting, so I'm really looking forward to it.
For sure.
Excellent. Where are we? Approval of minutes. I would like to move that we approve the virtual, regular, public, and executive session meetings for September 14th, 2020, the minutes of the virtual special public meeting on September 21st, 2020, and the virtual public workshop meeting on October 5th, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about the minutes? Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Marasti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFavendee-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Rovitch?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. And now it's time for our student representative report. Hello, Mariana and hello, Polly. Just go ahead when you're ready.
Hi. Okay, so there was a lot going on this past week. There was, there's also a lot coming up. So last week, I think Mariana mentioned that high school students submitted art explaining what respect means to them. So congratulations to the two contest winners, Nicole Chakalian and Deborah Goldstein. Artwork can be found on the guidance Google Classrooms. Today, Saga and Women's Issues organized a phone bank to express concerns to on the fence senators about the potential confirmation of the Supreme Court nominee Amy Barrett. I attended. There were probably around 20 participants. It was great. I thought it was a great show of leadership, initiative, and civic engagement from our high school. So that was really great. Mini monk started today and will continue throughout the week in Ms. Wilson's World History class. So Tara Shukla, a senior and HP Monk officer, did a wonderful job organizing this sort of introduction to civic engagement for the freshmen. It's sort of a mini conference, and it's really meant to encourage student discussion and debate about community, ways to get involved, and school issues that are important to the freshman class. At the end of the week, each class will present to Mr. Lassiter and the administration the changes that they want enacted in our school. So that will be really interesting. Mariana?
Okay. The Owl Master Mentorship Program is still looking for mentors for certain languages. So they're already found for like some, but they're still missing. And the tech crew is, has its interesting, interest meeting this Wednesday. The Avidum Yearbook is holding its first organizational meeting for the 2021 book this Friday. And that center, that center is hosting its first open mic night on Thursday, October 29th at 7:00 PM. And this year, our DECA chapter is going to be competing virtually. High school students have until October 30th to join our DECA chapter. Yeah.
Okay. And then, I guess conjointly, middle, high school, middle school. So we've gotten many students who have expressed their appreciation for the additional breaks that were added to the middle school and high school schedules. I believe it was a 15-minute break for, in the middle of the high school schedule, and a 20-minute break in the middle of the middle school schedule. Some students have asked, and I know Dr. Taylor touched on this in last week's meeting, have asked if there's any possibility of increasing time between classes. I think it's around two-minute, three-minute transition time, which I know can be really difficult. So, yeah. Another issue I believe Dr. Taylor touched on during last week's meeting was whether or not the school should require videos to be on and how to approach students, how teachers should approach students when their videos are off. Over the weekend, some students said that they prefer that teachers privately message them about it. There have been some instances, you know, not super serious, but where teachers do call out and interrupt the class, call out students on having their video off, and some have expressed some embarrassment about that. So I think that moving forward, it would be nice if teachers would first privately message students. Yeah, and then I think Mariana can finish it.
Okay. The Arts High Grade 6 to 12 application is now all open for gifted and talented students in the literally performing and visual arts, and the students that are interested should attend the meeting on Thursday. This Friday, Zone 6 is holding up a meeting with Coach Harrison, HTHS Vice Principal Richardson, and current Coordinator Ashton Burrell, and teams can go and participate in socially distant activities and games, and we have, will have the opportunity to get support and advice from the event guests. And I, yeah, I think that's it.
Okay. Is that it for all of our reports?
Yes.
Thank you so much, guys. Polly and Mariana both, do you have a formal way to sort of communicate concerns to your building principals about things like video on and off? And are you guys, do you have an open line of communication with Mr. Lassiter, for example?
Yeah, typically we'll email him. Yeah.
I just, the only reason I mention it is the board, we're delighted to hear about that kind of stuff. We really want to know what's going on during the school day. But we also, you know, in terms of actually changing things, we're hopeful that you would reach out to Mr. Lassiter, you know, see, see where that goes and let us know. Thank you so much. That's really good to know. All right, Scott, it is time for your presentation.
Dr. Woodward had a hand up.
Oh.
You know, I just wanted to ask Polly, because I was a little, what's your, what's your understanding of what the policy is right now about the video? I'm still a little bit confused about what the high school policy is.
Yeah, so I think students are also a little bit confused. It seems, at least in my classes, it's pretty flexible, but there's no, like, we weren't told exactly whether or not it's mandatory, if it's not, like, how teachers should approach, you know, asking students to turn their videos on, or, you know, gauge how engaged students are if they have the videos on or off. So I don't think that's exactly clear to a lot of students. So some people were bringing that up to us.
Thank you.
Dr. Woodward, I've had some dialogue with teachers after sending out an article from Etutopia about this topic, and I think at the very least, we've put on everybody's radar the, the, the impact having video on all the time could possibly have. I don't think we considered that when we started the school year. So I'm glad to hear from Polly that the teachers are sensitive to that need.
Good. I mean, it sounds like, without wishing to overstep, it might be a good idea to have a building-wide, not a policy in the sense of a board policy, but a building-wide practice that's understood by all. Sounds like it would be a good, good initiative. All right, Scott, your presentation?
Well, I am excited to kick off this year's Student Spotlight with a little speech from Ms. Brady, who will be introduced in just a second. Before we get to that, I want to point out to folks who are here, potentially for the first time at an October board meeting, you should know, this is around the time we start to monthly recognize the achievements of students who are not always recognized for their achievements. These are the individuals who are hardworking, they have tenacity, they have grit, they, they illustrate growth mindset, and many of them also are main contributors to their community, to their peers, and to the teachers in the school community. So every month, we'll identify a student from a different school who has really stepped up. And tonight, we have a middle school student here with us. So Ms. Brady, our middle school principal, could you please share a little bit about what you know about Jeremiah?
I certainly will. First, can everybody hear me? I just want to make sure. I know there's a little echo, but I'm working on my home office, so excuse that, please. So Jeremiah, hi Jeremiah, how are you?
I'm good.
Good. So I, I have to tell you guys, all of you, that I'm so proud to honor Jeremiah's appearance tonight in the Student Spotlight. I was actually in a seventh grade team meeting, and I brought up the Student Spotlight, and almost all of the teachers unanimously, at the exact same time, said Jeremiah. So it was a very easy point for me. I want to tell you that all of Jeremiah's teachers wrote very lengthy narratives that I'm going to, I promise one would email them all to Jeremiah so that he can read them. But I just wanted to share some of the highlights for everyone. Mr. Deppen said that Jeremiah articulates his understanding of the material being covered and asks insightful and thoughtful questions regarding the lessons. Ms. Anon says that in breakout rooms, Jeremiah helps students by initiating the conversations when needed and waits for others before he shares. Mr. Lujan said that Jeremiah is a leader who extends himself to other students who are in distress and is a great friend to anyone who needs a helping hand. But what I liked personally best about all the wonderful things that the teachers shared was that they all commented on the courtesy that Jeremiah demonstrates. And this was not only to his peers, but to his teachers as well. Jeremiah, I just, I want to personally thank you, because in this trying time, Jeremiah, you ask your teachers how they are doing, and I just thought, I, it just warmed my heart, really and truly. All of them told me how much they appreciate that concern, because here they are trying to make sure that everybody else is okay, and Jeremiah, you're the one who remembers that teachers are people too, and sometimes they need to be checked on just like everybody else. So it really is truly an honor to be able to recognize Jeremiah in the Student Spotlight tonight. Congratulations, my friend. It's well deserved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
You're very welcome. Thanks for having us.
Jeremiah, thank you so much. That's really inspirational. We're just delighted for you.
Jeremiah and family, this board meeting is being recorded, and I'll be uploading the recording to the main website for the school district tomorrow morning. So if you want to share with other people, you're welcome to do that.
Thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for recognizing, really appreciate it.
It sounds like it was well deserved. Thank you so much.
It was well deserved.
You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting if you'd like, or to leave anytime, whatever you prefer.
And thank you also to all the amazing Highland Park teachers and to all the amazing Highland Park principals and staff and everybody in the board event. Thank you to all of you.
Oh, you're welcome, and we're so lucky to have our teachers and administrators.
Thank you very much, guys. God bless. Thank you.
Bye-bye, take care.
Okay, I'm going to shift gears and provide an update about how the school year is playing out so far. Bear with me one second, I'm going to turn to my slides. So I'd like to spend a few minutes first, first spreading some good news, some cheer, and then talking about how decision-making has been playing out to implement Phase 2 of the reentry to school plan, which would have our pre-K to 3 and some of our special needs kids come back. And then I'm going to touch on some of the concerns that have been brought to my attention about what will be the hybrid plan for those elementary students coming back, when we do come back. I happen to feel a little bit better today than I did a couple of days ago about the rate of infections here in town, so let's hope that we are on a, on a better, better trajectory so far. So first, the good stuff. There have been good things happening around town, thanks to our faculty and our students. This is a picture of the orchestra, the high school orchestra led by Mr. Martino that played a concert outside the library on October 2nd, the afternoon. Our music department is, is working closely with the director of the library to, to do more of these performances live for our community. Meanwhile, our faculty and leadership at the building level are trying very hard to replicate some of those things that we've done in a traditional school setting online. We have Spirit Week coming up, we're going to play it into Halloween. And something I'd like to point out, we started on September 30th, and will continue to do periodically, is facilitate wellness days. Wellness days have been offered to both students and personnel. We've had numbers of teachers and counselors facilitating workshops related to such things as yoga, zumba, tai chi, even salsa dance to the kids, thanks to the teen centers coordinating work. So we, we had a successful September 30th. We anticipate we'll continue this practice. And I also want to echo what Mariana and Polly pointed out, and that is that we've been working with Ashton Burrell and the Zone 16 Center to, to provide some support. And so here's the flyer that went out that illustrates what, I think it was Polly mentioned earlier during the, during the presentation. I'd like now to shift gears and talk about how decisions have been made recently and will continue to be made about bringing our students back for in-person school. I need to remind the board and share with some in the community who may not be aware that we have a number of stakeholder groups, three in total, that I consult to provide me information about, that they've collected on their own about the conditions on the ground. A lot of the input I get from these groups has helped inform my decisions about school operation. One such group is called the Central Leadership Team. The Central Leadership Team is made of the teacher, support staff, union leadership, led by President Keith Presty. Also represented on the Central Leadership Team is the president of the Supervisor and Principals Union, Mike Lassiter, high school principal. We've got two board members, I'm sorry, three board members on that team, Mark Krieger, Anne Gallin, and Darcy Sumarusti. I'm on the team, of course, and then from time to time, we'll invite other members of the leadership group, whether it be from the faculty or the formal leadership team, administration, to the, to the team. And this group resolves some of those, those tough questions we need to answer. So they've been very helpful with the guidance that I've been heating to, to move forward and operating with the buildings and determining whether we come back or not. The other two groups I have, I refer to as task forces. The Core Task Force is a, a group mostly of first responders, medical professionals, and district personnel. And then I've got a, what I call an input task force, made up mostly of parents and more personnel. The Central Leadership Team and the task forces met with me last week and affirmed the, the plan that we put in place back in July and August to determine whether or not I can return students to school. That would have me looking at a case rate of 21 or over in seven days as determining whether I can open or close. If I have 21 or more cases, I would not open or I would close if, if we were in school. And this is the rate that equals half of the rate that we saw at the pandemic's peak back in March and April. As of Saturday, we had 23 cases in a seven-day span, and you can see here, thanks to Mark Krieger for putting this together earlier and sharing it with me, what the numbers looked like, seven-day span, ending each day. So October 11th, in, in, in seven days, ending October 11th, we had 20 cases. In seven days, ending October 10th, we had 23 cases. I mean, if you look at the numbers of the last week, week and a half, you can see they're high, they're relatively high. Now, this does not mean that I am not open to considering what the Department of Health, as I've listed here, calls a significant spread in the community to be occurring. What you see here on this slide are the two language talking points that I use from the Department of Health to, to help shape that number, that 21 in seven days number. But I do have a meeting with the Central Leadership Team this Thursday, and I would like to explore this standard that we've been using to be sure it's accurate. And I did discuss it last week with the stakeholder groups and the Central Leadership Team, but, but frankly, I think it needs another go. I still believe that 21 cases in seven days is quite a bit for a small, physically small community like ours, 1.8 square miles, 14,000 residents packed in such a small condensed area. I still think that number is significant, considering our size and our density, our population density. However, I, I'm, I'm pretty desperate to get our young students back. I really am. And, and I know the parents in the community are as well. So I'm going to revisit the standard once more with the Central Leadership Team this Thursday. Friday will be the day I determine if we'll come back on Monday, the 19th. So meeting with my Central Leadership Team Thursday gives me a full day to weigh other options. Hopefully, the transmission rate will, I'm sorry, the infection rate will continue to, to be on the lower side of things. Today, it was reported Highland Park only had one infection. Yesterday as well, only one infection. So if we can maintain a, a single or two infection per day rate over the next five to six days, I think we'll be in pretty good shape, even if I don't work with the Central Leadership Team to adjust the, the standard that we've been using. Now, when we do come back, we will have to operate on a hybrid schedule for grades K, at least grades pre-K to 3, likely grades 4 to 5 as well. My colleague in South Brunswick put it best when he said that most districts' hybrid plans are really bad, or bad or really bad. In his case, he says, he says, he refers to them as being horrible or very horrible. I, I know that our hybrid plan is far from perfect. I do need to explain why we had to go to a hybrid plan, and I will point out some of the plans we had to try to, to, to provide continuous instruction for those students who will be coming in on the hybrid plan, but will be home for two days out of the five-day week. This is data that you see before you, I shared with the approximately 70 people who came to my pre-K to 3 parent guarding forums last week. Numbers haven't changed much since last week. You can see that we are running in, we'll say kindergarten, we'll start there as, as an example, three remote classes. I've got one teacher assigned to each of those classes, and then we do have slated to come in person, three groups of kindergarten students, and I plan to have three teachers staffing those students as well. You can see in grade one, the numbers are higher. That's because our enrollment overall is a little lower in kindergarten. And then in grades two and three, you can see, we've got a much greater number of kids who want to be home than will come in. Now, the reason why we had to go to a hybrid model is because the numbers you're looking at are relatively high for us to maintain effectively classes, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, all in, in, in one whole group. So we are splitting the classes so that not only can we maintain safety and health, but we can also provide effective instruction. I'll, I'll share the, the, the picture that I still have in my head with the board, I shared with the folks at the forum last week. Keith Presty and Anne Gallin and I, and Michael Donald, Principal McNally set up, we had a model classroom that we set up, and we, we looked at at Irving. I believe the classroom had 12 or 13 seats, desks in it, spread out throughout the entire class. We do want to provide seven feet of distance among kids, sort of six feet, recognizing that young children are going to move around in their seats, not going to be able to stay put, or at the desk while they put for four hours.
Scott, could you please mute the third speaker, Dan, on the list? I, I don't have control of the hosting.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to pause for a second, because I hear chatter.
Yeah, could you please mute? Could you please?
I got it.
Steve, first.
Okay. Anyway, we had to split the classes because they're too large. Now, if you look at a school district in this county that actually did open up in September in person, East Brunswick, the standard that Victor Valeski, the superintendent there, used to determine class size, safe class size, was 25% of the class. You look at our numbers in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, we, we are obviously maintaining higher than 25% level classes if we were to keep these, the enrollment as such, five days a week. So if, if we were to use at least one other school district as a standard, I would use East Brunswick, and even East Brunswick's standard hasn't been, served as a gold standard. As you know, they're having their own share of challenges with infections in, in their schools. We, as you can see, overall, have many more students who are opting for remote, the older the student. So our second and third grade rates of students who want to go remote are much greater than in-person than they are at the lower grades. But nevertheless, if we're going to provide the safe in-person classroom environments, we do need to split those classes. Couple of folks who attended the forum asked if we could open up additional sections. Couple of folks who attended the forum asked if we could open up additional sections and hire new teachers. And I had to point out to them the major challenge that districts all over the state have encountered trying to find teachers to staff the classes. In fact, the article that I pulled the headline from here in the upper-left corner was just in last week's paper on online NJ.com, I believe, regarding Hillsborough. There are numbers of students in Hillsborough in the AP classes in particular who have no teachers staffing the classes, so they've had to work from home, they had to learn from home, because the district took a hard line, told the teachers that if they can't commit, they had to take leave. The teachers took leave, and now the district stuck, not able to find substitutes to cover those classes. And this is the situation throughout the state. These are all clippings from papers in South Jersey, North Jersey, Central Jersey. So it's near impossible for us to be able to open up additional sections so we can go more to a five-day program. The other comment that I've gotten has been regarding live stream video. I know there are some parents and guardians who are committed to having us incorporate live stream video in our classrooms, but I have to say that I'm committed not to allowing live stream video. I've done some research, spoken to individuals, graduate students of my own, people here who are on faculty, who have kids in districts trying to make this work, and it's not working. There are a few districts that are making it work. But the two particular, of which I'm aware, happen to be districts that were able to provide more technology for their classrooms. They are wealthier, situated in wealthier communities for the most part. And so I would imagine that the students have more technology to their avail than the kids in my community. Or Highland Park is not like Princeton, Highland Park's not like Metcalf, and it's not like other school districts that may be able to make this work. The other suggestion, satisfactory suggestion that was made is that we carve out some large spaces like our gym and cafeteria to accommodate the classes that I need to split so that I can just move the class into a larger space. Problem there is that I don't have enough large spaces to accommodate all the classes that I need to split. Essentially, I need to split every single class that's coming in in person. So that's six at Irving and four at Bartle. I should also add, it's my intention to run our after-care program right away at 1:00 until 6:00 p.m. for all children who are on the hybrid schedule, regardless of the day that they're actually in school. So if they're home for two days, they can come in, take part in the after-care program. I'm going to run my after-care programs safely and effectively. My after-care coordinators need to prep those large spaces and ready it for all the kids who will be coming in. The after-care programs use gym, they use cafeteria, the media centers, and the multipurpose rooms in the districts.
Because the most important thing is after-care program.
And here's chatter, so please mute yourself. I would appreciate if everybody would mute themselves. Thank you. There is a frequently asked questions document that you can find both on the Facebook page and on the district website. And I do answer quite a few questions that came up at the forum, some of which I've answered here. But in case you have a friend who has questions and couldn't make it to the meeting, I would send him, her, they over to the Q and A. So I just want to wrap up by reminding the parents and guardians who might be here tonight, that if you have questions, if things to share with us, concerns that have to do with scheduling, operations, safety, please, 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 reach out to the principals first. If the principals cannot accommodate your concerns, your needs, they can't answer your questions, I'm available to you. I'm your next step. And I think by now, the community knows I'm quite accessible. I have an open door, a virtually open door policy. All operational matters are handled by the school district, not the board. While the board and I work collaboratively, and I do get input from the board members. I trust all mine, individuals on this board, to provide me some good feedback. Ultimately, all operational decisions are made by me and my team. Don't forget, you can email the district in case you don't know where to direct your question or your concern to hpreentry@hpschools.net. That concludes my presentation. Anne?
Thank you, Scott. Other questions or comments from board members? Chris Woodward, please.
One thing that has been going around in discussions is the possibility of a criterion that would focus more on the kids that are in our school system. Suppose we wanted to decide to do that. Is that information that the county would give us? You know, which of the infections are actually in our schools?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, they're obligated to as part of their contact tracing protocols. And my colleagues, actually, I can only name one at this point, and that's Victor over in East Brunswick, has provided the community of superintendents in the county input. And he has been very happy with the response he's gotten from the county health department when cases have come up in East Brunswick.
Other questions or concerns? Rob?
Scott, going back to your slide presentation where you showed the different groupings that had chosen in-person instruction and how is that divided between the different cohorts? And then exactly what's being provided to the students who chose in-person instruction on the days when they can't come in?
Thanks for asking. You made it to clarify your question about cohorts, but I can answer the second question first, if you'd like, and then we can go back to the first question. So I neglected to point that out in my presentation, so thanks for asking, Rob. So we are, we, the principals, Ms. McNally, Ms. Knapp, and I are putting a lot of eggs in the basket that would have us using paraprofessionals who are already assigned to classes that are running in-person and remote, particularly those who will be staffed in person to supervise the children in the physical classroom from time to time during the two days that kids will be home so that the teacher can step aside and work with those kids for a substantial amount of time remotely. So the picture I paint for the folks who came, the picture I painted for the folks who came to the forum last week is that of what they may see when they visit a classroom that's running literacy circles, literacy centers, or math workshop centers, when kids are rotating, station rotation model, when they're rotating from group to group. Our kids are working on their own, even as young as kindergarten, first grade. We do have paraprofessionals circulating around the room just to redirect them or provide assistance if necessary. I foresee us being able to do the same thing to an extent. On those two days, the kids are home, not in-person. So that, in this case, though, while the kids physically in-person are working in their small groups and the power is circulating around the room, the teacher would step aside, zoom in with the kids at home, and provide them their small group support.
At the scheduled times, Scott? At scheduled times or at any time?
It would be at structured times, just like they do when they're running a math workshop lesson. So what I envision would happen is the teacher would tell the kids at home, let's say cohort B at home on Monday, Thursday, I'm sorry, Monday, Tuesday, at 9:45, we're going to meet for 15, 20 minutes to check in about our reading work or writing.
And then again, later on, like before the end of, before the end of the day, they check back to make sure.
They could. I mean, I see us doing those check-ins sporadically throughout the day. In a four-hour day, I think it's viable to be able to do it in 15- to 20-minute chunks throughout the day.
So would that be, I mean, I know this is more of a question for Ms. McNally and Ms. Knapp, but would that be communicated to parents instead of a daily schedule form?
Of course.
Like, kid on at 9:00. Sounds like it's going to be complicated.
Oh, no, no. This would be, this would be a very structured process. We're not just going to do it fly-by-day, you know, pop in when we can. It'll be structured. Obviously, parents are going to have to know because they need to be present for their kids in most cases.
Right, right. Other, Rob?
Yeah, so going back to the cohorts, you know, if the in-person instruction on any one grade level was three classes, how many days per week are they going to school?
Two.
So what's happening on the other three days in the school?
So Wednesday will be an all-virtual day for all kids. So all kids, every child's going to get at least three days of live, continuous, four-hour or close to the four-hour block of instruction. Then there'll be two days of asynchronous/synchronous work at home if you're an in-person hybrid student.
Other questions or?
Marilyn had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I think you answered it, but students will have like Google Classroom assignments. When you say asynchronous work, they'll be given assignments for the days that they're not in person.
Either via Google Classroom or the case of kindergarten, they're using. So what's that? Yes, seesaw, thank you. Seesaw.
Thank you.
Great. Darcy?
Anne, I thought now might just be a good idea to let everybody know some of the stuff that I found out at the Middlesex meeting, just because it ties in with what Scott's talking about, and I'll keep it really brief. And I sent all the board members some notes from the meeting that I attended last week. I attended a virtual Middlesex County School Boards Association meeting. And Scott presented along with the superintendent, the new superintendent in Edison. And it was really interesting. It was interesting to hear the superintendent in Edison, you know, really talk about some of the same issues that we're having. They both talked about their respective districts' response to COVID-19. Clearly already, you know, had an idea of what Scott's going through. But it was interesting to hear from another Middlesex County superintendent. And for him also to reiterate that no two districts in Middlesex County are the same. That in talking, you know, with Scott and the rest of his colleagues in the county, that even in terms of what percentage of students wanted to be able to come back for in-person learning was radically different from one district to another. So he said, in particular, in Edison, only 22% of students across the board wanted to even come back at all for in-person learning. And he only had six schools, I don't even remember how many schools Edison has, but it's a lot, had more than 25% in any particular school that wanted to come back in person. And even with those low numbers, all Edison has done to this point is to bring back pre-K students that wanted to come back and special education students that wanted to come back. And even he acknowledged that he was just very lucky that the numbers worked, that the number of students that wanted to come back kind of matched the number of teachers that were able to come back. So he felt, you know, he made it very clear to the group that he felt like, you know, he was very fortunate that that worked and no other roadblocks presented themselves for him to be able to do that and acknowledged the other roadblocks, you know, other roadblocks that have popped up in other counties, or I'm sorry, in other districts in the county that, you know, stopped superintendents from doing what they may have wanted to do. He was also clear that he didn't open up in September because of similar circumstances, that we had issues with transportation, issues with ventilation. That's what stopped Edison from going back at all for in-person learning at the beginning of the year. At the end of the meeting, the floor was kind of open for board members across the county to just kind of discuss things among ourselves. And I asked three very specific questions. The first question I asked was, has anybody at any grade level gone back full-time? No, of the districts represented on the call. I'm not 100% certain that every single district was represented, but I'm fairly comfortable saying there isn't a district in Middlesex County that has gone back full-time for any grade level. The second question I asked was, have, wait, what were the other two? The other one I asked was, does, you know, what are the criteria that you're using for deciding when to open, when to close, or when to put students in quarantine? A lot of shrugs was basically the response that I got. And our county school board, Mary Ann, what do you call her, Ann? Or, you know, our rep, basically. She's, you know, and another statewide New Jersey School Boards Association employee who was on the call basically said, yeah, there are no criteria. There's no specific criteria that schools are supposed to use that they're being given either by the state or by the county to make these decisions. So yes, each individual district is making these, you know, difficult decisions on their own, based on their own criteria, which, when you think about that, is kind of wacky. And then there was one other question that I asked, and I'm blanking on it right now, and I don't have my notes in front of me. Let's see. Oh, in-person meetings, whether any other districts have gone back, any boards have gone back to in-person meetings, and a few have. So I thought that was interesting and maybe something, you know, we can talk about in the future, that some boards have gone back to doing some in-person meetings while still allowing members of the public to participate virtually, you know. And I would assume that they also have some, you know, members of the public who can come in person as well, you know, based on room limits and things like that. You know, especially if we're going to push for students and staff to come back. I think we need to look at us going back, too.
Thank you, Darcy. I would just point out, I'd be happy to go back to virtual, to non-virtual board meetings. I do want to point out, though, that for the most part, we're not requiring people with an issue to come back. No child is required to come back to school under our hybrid plans. And my impression is that we've been fairly generous. Generous sounds like we're being nice. We've been fairly reasonable about accommodating teachers' requests. Should they have a family member in their house who is high-risk, we certainly would not ask that teacher to come back. So it's not a completely symmetrical situation. But sure, we should definitely consider having the board meetings go back. Another couple of board members are not, who perhaps feel that they're not in a medical position to do that. So we need to discuss fairness to those board members, that sort of thing. But very good point for discussion. Does anybody have questions for Darcy about that meeting?
Chris has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, if you don't mind, I mean, we can also talk about that at the end of the meeting when we do the, I just wanted to kind of add that stuff in here since we were talking about the closings and everything. But I don't want to delay the rest of the meeting anymore.
Well, let's hear from Chris, anyway. No? Okay. No, Chris. Any other?
Hold on.
Hold on? Oh, I'm sorry, we have a, you're in charge of muting, Scott. I don't have the mute, the mute thing.
No, we're all good, I just muted. But I'll make you co-host.
That's okay. Okay, let's move on to our board committee reports and recommendations. Michelle, oh, it's a reminder to the public, we did have a workshop meeting last week, so we've discussed the vast majority of the items on our agenda. Anything in bold font is new, meaning it wasn't available for us to discuss last week. And we also read through our committee reports, with the exception, I think, of Equity and Excellence, which had not yet met. So we probably won't be hearing committee reports from folks today unless there's something new that came up. All right, Michelle, curriculum, please.
I have anything to report, and I have no items to move. So I'm done, that's it. Sorry.
All right. Questions, comments for Michelle?
There's nothing to add.
All right, I don't see anybody. Yell out if I missed you. Finance and facilities, Mark?
Yes, thank you, Anne. So we have a handful of new items, I have no report. We have a, item two is a new bill list for the first half of September for approximately $819,000. Item four is the cafeteria bill list from, in effect, the last week of September for approximately $5,500. Again, that's item four. Under item seven, for bedside instruction, as of last week, we had one student. This week, we have three students. So we have two new students at Rutgers University Behavioral Health Center getting bedside instruction, and they are at the rate of $65 an hour, both of them effective early October. So moving on to item 15, this is the approval of our Comprehensive Maintenance Plan and Annual Maintenance Budget to the State Department of Education. So we'll be moving to approve that. We'll be moving the number 16 to move the capital reserve amount, account maximum amount, and that capital reserve. And that capital reserve maximum amount is $2,127,131. Doesn't mean we have that amount. And also, a very large portion of what we actually do have is slated to repair the athletic field once the borough and the county come up with their pieces of that money. Item 17 is the contract with a company called Substitute Service Company. That's a company, and I think also known as Swing Education, or it's known as Swing Education. It's headquartered in San Mateo, California. These are the rates for substitutes. The reason for this is we're not able to get enough substitutes. Not that they're coming from California, they're coming from New Jersey, the substitutes. But it's hard enough to find substitutes that we're going to approve a backup company to our usual company that we ask to find substitutes for us. Item 18 is an approval of a non-public school security services. This is money we don't pay, but we have to approve it. And the money will flow through from the state, its non-public school security aid funds, to private schools. In this case, it's $8,000. And let's see. Right. Yes, it's $8,000 for a school in Lenoka Harbor, New Jersey. Item 19 is approval of non-public nursing services. And that's also for a non-public school, passed through from the Educational Services Commission. We have to approve it. Item 20 is a new out-of-district placement. One student going to East Mountain School in Bellemeade, New Jersey at a tuition rate of $67,830 per year. Apparated at approximately $51,000 for the remaining 180 days of the school year. Item 21 is a contract amendment. This is with our custodial service. It refers to years 2020 through 2023. And it's an increase of about $7,500 per year in custodial services due to some salary adjustments. Oh, and that's the full report.
Thank you so much, Mark. Mr. Magziner, sorry, you had your hand up.
Right. So just with Swing, the teachers that are, I guess contracted with Swing as opposed to Source for Teachers, is that we have some sense that there is a sizable number of teachers that are contracted with one and not the other? And are they available to us in person or entirely remotely, or some of each?
I can answer the first, and I lean on Linda and Scott for the second and also correcting me perhaps on the first part. My understanding from what I read and was provided was that they are a company that specializes in special education teachers. And so they are more likely to find us special education teachers that aren't available for Source for Teachers. And that's been an ongoing problem for us. As far as in-person versus in remote situation, I assume it's the same, but I defer to Scott. I see him shaking his head.
Yes, 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 that's correct. They'll come in person or be home. And they were recommended to us by Ms. Budine, our Director of Special Services colleague. So they, other districts have had good experiences with the people that they've brought to us.
And let's hope we can find some teachers here. It's been extraordinarily difficult. And I think irrespective of the pandemic, it's going to be harder and harder for districts to find teachers in the coming years due to some terrible state regulations.
Thanks.
Oh, sorry. Monique?
Yes. Did you call me, Anne?
I tried to, yeah. Monique?
I just had a question about 18, the non-public school security services. And I'm wondering, Mark, if you can just explain that a little bit for me. I'm not quite clear on exactly why we have to accept this recommendation, or we don't have to, but what this is about.
I think it's because of state law that the local school board has to approve certain kinds of services for non-public schools, even though we don't provide the money.
That's what I thought. Okay.
And Linda or Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We do this, we do this all, I mean, not all the time, but once every few months I see this and I call Linda and we talk about it and then I remember again as well. Darcy, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, this is New Jersey's version of vouchers, essentially. This is the way that New Jersey diverts money that should be going to public schools to private schools. That's what it is. And it kind of gets snuck through this way. So we kind of don't, you know, we kind of don't call it what it is. But at this point, if, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but the Education Law Center has a running total of how much money now leaves a state budget and goes to private schools. So that's, I'll look, I'll look for that information. Monique can send it to you. But every year, it seems just about another additional kind of aid gets approved. And this is constant lobbying that's happening in Trenton for the private schools to get more and more public funds diverted to private schools.
And this is across, I'm sure, all areas. This particular, this particular one is for security services, but I'm assuming this is definitely across the board. So I'd love to see that.
Yeah, there's security aid, there's nursing aid, there's, I mean, there's four or five, I think, now different kinds of categories of state funding that goes to, that goes to private schools.
It's like they're using us as a conduit to keep church and state together.
Yeah, it's backdoor vouchers. That's all it is. Backdoor vouchers.
It's maddening, actually. It's maddening.
Institutional, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Are we obligated for this when it's in Lenoka Harbor, New Jersey? I'm not even sure where that is.
Heard of it.
But when it's, when it's local, I kind of understand. But I have great exception to this when it's not even in our district. And I have a secondary objection to armed security services because I have very limited approach to that. I don't feel like armed security is appropriate in schools. And so it's twofold on this one where, one, it's not local and two, it's, I don't know what the appropriateness of armed security is when it's not in our district.
I mean, the school is in our district or near our district.
Yeah, the school's in our district, the security service is in Lenoka Harbor.
And without commenting on the voucher type situation, I mean, this is a Jewish school and occasionally they are subject to violent anti-Semitic attacks. So I can understand why there might be more of a need for outside security. That said, I'm not saying this voucher idea is a great one, but I'm assuming it's for that rather than for police roaming the hallways of the school. I assume it's to deal with the usual unfortunate episodes of violent threats that such schools receive. All right. Other questions or concerns?
Chris?
Just out of curiosity, how many custodial staff are we, you know, indirectly employing through this 1.3 million?
I can't answer that, but Linda may be able to.
Do you happen to know, Linda?
I don't have the exact number. I think it's 17, but I'm just, I'm not sure if that includes everyone. It definitely does not include the custodial manager. And I'm not absolutely sure about the head. I can, I can look it up and tell you, but I'll need a few minutes.
Yeah, I was just curious. Thank you.
Linda, does that include supplies and things like that, or these all, this is all salary and benefits?
It does not include supplies. It includes, there is an equipment allotment. I believe it's $15,000 a year. It includes the custodial manager. It includes the administrative fees, which would include training the staff if they needed to do, to train any of the custodial staff. And I just, I can't answer the questions verbally and look something up at the same time. I'm sorry.
We'll come back if we need to. Other questions, concerns about finance? Okay.
I have the, I have the sheet up if you want to. Just give me a second. So we've got 14.
Later is fine.
I believe it's 17, plus we have a groundsman and a custodial supervisor and a secretary.
Thank you.
That looks like it. I think we may have reduced the number of custodians by one though during the course of the contract. Sorry.
Chris, would you be willing to read through any new personnel items for us?
Sure. So we had just a few minor changes, I think, from the workshop meeting last week. So the dates of the maternity leave have changed. We're adding a musical vocal director under item four. The, what's the next one? There's more professional development, which Scott, I presume, is related to the learning to deal with the remote learning?
Which, which number in particular? Because we had a couple here on the jet, I believe.
Yes, 13 in particular?
Yep. So that's actually for the teachers who'll be doing work for their peers. It's number 14. That's for parents and guardians. Just by my add, regarding number 14, the plan is for us to, instead of holding live workshops for our parents and guardians, knowing that they may be working during the day. When we can conduct these workshops, we're going to tape them and set up an archive of videos that people can watch, that they can understand. But their kids are up to.
Okay, great. And could you also comment on 16? I'm not sure what that's about.
Number 16?
Yeah, just a minor adjustment.
Yeah, that's when a, when an employee shows that he, she, they has gotten another 30 credits to pass the master's degree, we move them up.
Congratulations to Ms. Boffick. Okay, that's it.
Anne? No need to.
Sorry. Questions or concerns for Chris? All right, Mark, let's move on to policies, please.
Okay, so we have two sets of policies. There's no changes from last time. We have the five policies for first reading and the five policies for second reading. And Darcy, I believe a week ago or so, you sent me a small change, which was a typo. And I did, I did update it. Okay, so I think, I think this stands, you know, with what we did.
Questions, comments? All right. Monique, Equity and Excellence, I think you might have a report for us tonight as well?
Yeah. Oh, I'm going to mute. Okay. Yes, I do. We met this past Thursday, the 8th. On our first topic discussion was Scott updated us on our new advisor of diversity of inclusion, Tara Young, and some of the things that she's up to. Tara has been meeting individually with each school building principal, focusing on identifying their areas of concern, hearing them out and helping her to sort of define what she should take as her priority in these first few months of her service. I think she's met with every principal at this point with the exception of Irving. So I assume that's going to be coming up as soon as they can schedule mutually convenient time. And Scott shared that, again, the key role for Tara will be to research and develop action plans around needs related to diversity inclusion, as Scott delegates to her. And one item that we discussed in particular, that we've sort of been talking about a lot, is looking at the selection criteria for honors and AP classes and thinking about ways to just ensure that those classes start to be more representative of our student body. So then we started talking a little bit more about the AP access process. And Scott was able to, at that time, he didn't quite have the demographic data on the students who have waived into AP classes in 2019, 2020. But he did get back to us subsequent to the meeting with those numbers, so I'm going to share that. Of glaring note, Scott said, is that only one Latinx student and no Black students opted for the waiver. So we, as we all discussed before, that students can now waive into AP classes. It is an option. But unfortunately, as of 2019, 2020, students of color in those two categories were very low waving in. Only two of the 24 students who waved in, there were a total of 24 students. Only two of those students were special education students. 11 were white, 10 were Asian, two multiracial, and six were students on free and reduced lunch. So those are some of the demographic data that Scott shared with us. And again, clearly points out that there is a lot of work to do to just publicize, promote this waiver option and encourage students from historically underrepresented groups to, to take that additional load or challenge and know that they would be supported in the process. We then moved on to talking about the childcare supervision slash daycare program. Scott did share the results of a recent parent survey, four-questioned parent survey that he sent out assessing the daycare needs of families across the district. And we just looked at some of the stats and made some key takeaways from the data. There were 154 responses of those, 154, 17. Let me just give the school percentages first. 38% of the respondents were Irving families, 51% Bartle, 24% middle school, and 20% from the high school. And of the 154 respondents, 17 families, parents, guardians stated that they were having difficulty affording childcare at this time. 60% reported that they are currently providing no outside childcare. But again, many of those parents indicated that they either have a parent or guardian at home or they have, they have family members taking care of their children or, and they did express like some concern. Many of the parents expressed concern about not only affordability of the daycare, but also just safety, public health safety, and the kind of risk that that would entail. Approximately half said they would take advantage of a district daycare supervision program if it were opened to families regardless of whether they qualified for federally subsidized meals. So clearly, from the respondents that we got, it's nothing we don't already know. There's a need for this kind of on-service and we're just, as a district, unfortunately not in the position financially to be able to provide what, you know, had been hoped that we could provide. Scott did note, based on his kind of review of the comments, that the severity of need didn't seem to positively correlate with the expressed interest in the program. So based on the survey comments, Scott noted that about half of the parents who demonstrated the direst need comprised roughly 50% of the parents who indicated that they would take advantage of the program. So again, it just, you know, really speaks to kind of the complexity of how families and caregivers are, you know, making decisions about whether or not they would take advantage of this program. A lot of it is not only financial, but also health considerations. So again, it was just helpful to start to begin to get this information and get a sense of what the need is and hope that we can really find ways to fund a program that would support families with the daycare or supervision. Let me see what other key, if there were other key highlights we talked about. And I think I pretty much summed those up. The last topic we discussed was something actually that happened this afternoon that I hope went well, Scott. And that's a Black student listening session for middle school and high school students scheduled for 1:00 this afternoon, virtually via Scott Zoom. It was advertised by email to, whoops, sorry about that, to teachers' principals, by teachers' principals and Scott himself, to, you know, students who would hopefully take advantage of this opportunity to have the ear of administration and express their concerns, needs, and just have an opportunity to be heard and hopefully empowered in the process. The plan was for Scott to be joined by Mr. Gold and Ashton, I believe, Ashton Gurrell. And Tara Young was also to be invited for this session. So I'm hoping that you did get a few students to attend, Scott, and would love to hear some feedback if that is the case. And that ends my notes on the meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. Did you want to give any information at this time about the results of the meeting today? Or did you prefer to wait until you?
Well, I'd be glad to. I had one student appear. Ms. Young was present as well. The student who came was a 10th grader. Very engaging. I actually ended up inviting the student to be on my student cabinet because I was really impressed with the individual's willingness to share. But not much more came out of the meeting, really, except my connection with the student. I, I'll tell you though, between my want to get more student input and a suggestion that was made by a resident parent in our community, I have to. was made by a resident parent in our community, I've decided to hold a more general forum with students, which does not really fall under the aegis of Equity and Excellence. But since we're talking about student input, thought I'd share that next Monday at one thirty, I'm going to be having another listening session, but this will be for all middle and high school students to talk generally about their experiences with remote learning right now and whatever else under the sun they'd like to share with me.
That's great.
Wonderful. Thank you. Darcy?
Um, Scott, I was wondering if, I think it was a couple of weeks ago now, the state came out with that program using some of the CARES Act funding to help fund or to help pay parents, help reimburse parents for some of the cost of daycare. And I was wondering what efforts the district is making to get that information out to parents and if we know if any of our parents have been successful in applying for those funds from the state. Because to me, that was, you know, in the interim, while we're trying to get these other things off the ground, that is a great way for us to say to parents, hey, you know, this, if your kids are in daycare, this funding is available, and to try to make parents whole and make this a little bit less difficult, at least financially for families.
I agree. It is a great opportunity. So, so, so first, I'll say that I was very appreciative of the state trying to make some effort to help offset these costs, because we here in the district haven't been able to provide this daycare program because of staffing reasons. We did, or I did direct the secretaries at Irving and Bartle to call the fourteen parents and guardians who applied for the daycare program I was going to run, and individually spoke with each of them, although I don't know if they actually spoke with them. I'm going to follow up with the board about what kind of feedback we got, but they were tasked to reach out to them separately to provide all the information that they would need to sign up for the program. Parallel to that, the teen center took the lead in distributing the information out. We translated it into Spanish and Mandarin, traditional Chinese. And we did offer translation services to any individual who needed help. So with the protocol that we put out there had folks getting in touch with the teen center if they needed translation help or any help with the application. And then Angie Harper, the secretary of the teen center, would connect the individual with either somebody on site or with the folks that we lined up, including Ms. Broderick for Spanish and Ms. Ching Lin for Mandarin to help translate. But I'll follow up with the board and get some more information about what kind of reception we got from the families.
That'd be great. I'd be really curious to hear about that, because again, you know, I was, it was one of the more positive steps I think the state has taken in all of this to help support families.
I think they've raised the income limit, too. Now you can be earning up to one hundred and fifty, I think.
Oh, wow.
There's still some issues. I mean, as I understood the program, and people should definitely try to do it if they're interested. It was less flexible than I'd hoped it was. It had to be a pre-approved place, and they sent the money directly to the place, I think. So, you know, it's good, but it's, it's not as useful as it would be for people who have family daycare situations. Nonetheless, it's something. And anybody who's interested, if they can't figure out the information from the state's website, should definitely contact us. That's great. I'm glad we have translation services going. Thanks to the teen center, as always, and both teen centers, actually. That's wonderful. Other comments for Monique or Scott? Yes, Polly?
Hi, just two. So Dr. Taylor, I think it's actually great that you're thinking about holding a general meeting for students to attend. Just today, some students approached, approached me about concerns involving remote learning. One even discussed the high possibility of moving districts if she could, just because she's struggling so much. So I think, and they also expressed the desire to speak directly with you about that. So I don't know if you're giving that information out to the principals of the schools so they can distribute that. But I think that'd be great if everyone saw it, because I definitely think that people would come.
Yeah, Polly, I'll have Ms. Brady and Mr. Laster tomorrow. Get the word out. Do you think one thirty is a good time? I thought I'd give everybody a little lunch break in there.
Yeah.
Later, earlier?
I think one thirty should be good.
All right. Get the word out on my, on your front, too.
Yeah.
Off to your friends.
And then just really quick, something for Ms. Coleman. I was just wondering, are the, because we know there's, you know, a lot of disparity in the AP classes, AP and honor classes. Are AP waivers mandatory? Like, is that a school practice? Is that?
When you say mandatory, it just means that students who may not meet sort of the traditional qualifications for what would be considered, you know, an AP acceptance can waive into the class, meaning I'm going to waive these requirements and go ahead and opt into the class without having met whatever that set of criteria is. So it removes some of the barrier.
And is the district required to honor that waiver and admit the student to the class?
In that sense, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, that's your question. Is that, I'm assuming that was your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there?
So this can't be denied, in other words, yeah.
Okay. Is there any way that that could be removed, that the waiver barrier could be removed? I mean, I know I've spoken to some students who do waive into classes, and it makes them, you know, feel less.
Wow. Yeah. I'm glad you raised this. And I'm smirking, and I see Scott is kind of, because we had this conversation in our meeting, and it was a bit after, you know, after our discussion, and we kind of had this informal conversation about, do we even need to have this waiver, right? We don't, because that even in and of itself does just what you said. It can make feel, people, students feel uncomfortable and like they don't belong. So we are planning to have further conversations about expanding access even more than what we are doing through a waiver, right? Making it even less stigma-oriented, you know, more open for students, and also recognizing that it does require us as a district to provide support. And I know that the plan has been, once we get back into, I guess, more of a normal mode, to be able to offer that an extra class period for students who are needing extra support, so they can get that during the school day as well.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Monique articulated exactly what I'm thinking as well. And I appreciate that, Monique. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. And thank you for bringing that up, Polly. That's really an excellent point. Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Be great. I don't remember. I remember when we first discussed this several years ago, that the seeking a waiver process was quite burdensome and involved, you know, parent signatures and going back and forth. And there might have even been like a discussion between the parents and the, I'm assuming that it's no longer, or perhaps I misunderstood, and it never was.
I thought my understanding, not to cut you off, I thought my understanding was that that was simplified since then, right?
Great. Okay. But I also take your point, Polly, the waiver process.
Yeah.
Waiver process itself is problematic.
And what remains, Ann, is the reality that kids who don't know about the waiver or, or not, as Polly pointed out, feel uncomfortable about the waiver, will be discouraged and be left out of a program that they could potentially excel in.
That's right. Yeah.
I think we need our, our staff, too, to feel that they are supported and encouraging people to, you know, to waive in or just to sign up if we don't have a waiver process. I know that I've heard teachers, you know, at parent teacher nights, express the concern that if they encourage people to waive in, then, you know, the student might waive in, it might not get as good a grade, and the parent will be upset. So we need to sort of bring everybody on board to see this as a, as a growth opportunity and not sort of something that should be gate-kept. And then, and then parents, that parents should be complaining about, you know, my son got a B, not an A, you know, after he waived into AP, whatever. So I'm sure there's a degree of cultural change that still needs to happen among parents and teachers.
Looks like Marilyn has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marilyn.
Following up on that, do we know, Scott, how students have done? I think Monique said twenty-four waivers. Those students, do we have, are we keeping data on how they're perform, how they perform? Because it's last year's group.
I don't have this year's data, but I do have data from previous years I could share.
Yeah, I just, I would just be curious of how they, you know, if they're able to handle the workload.
Yeah. In fact, maybe what I can do for you, Marilyn, since you're our newest board member, is provide you a chunk of information that I've been giving the board over the last year or so about AP and honors access as well.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. Can I get you up to speed on that?
Great. Other questions or points for Monique? Mark, is that a hand I saw or just a motion?
I, I just wanted to say, I think the whole board would love to see those numbers. You might have sent them a year ago, but I'd love to see them again. And I think the whole board would.
And I think, yeah, just regularly, regularly reporting out on, on that data.
Yeah, students who opted in via the waiver and how they, and how they did, and how everyone did.
Right.
Got it.
Okay. That brings us to our first public comment period. Let me turn to the requisite announcement. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies one, six, four, and one, six, seven establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. If you would like to speak, please attempt to raise your virtual hand inside Zoom. There should be a little blue hand. If I don't call on you because I didn't see it, or you can't figure out how that works on your platform, just unmute your video and wave at the camera. I'll give everybody a few minutes to get themselves organized to make comments. Oh, I see. Mr. Presti has his hand up. Go ahead, Mr. Presti. Hello.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Good evening, everybody. Keith Presti, president of the Highland Park Education Association. I'll be giving a report on the behalf of the HPEA. The association is continuing to work with our members, Dr. Taylor, and administrators to ensure a safe and highly effective work environment for our students and staff. This has been a challenging week for our entire school community as we all closely monitor COVID-19 data and remain on standby, awaiting word as to when we may safely resume partial in-person learning. The responsibilities that the state of New Jersey has placed on local superintendents and boards of education during this crisis are as serious as they can get. Our educational leaders are being asked to make decisions that literally involve life and death. We applaud and thank Dr. Taylor for holding true to the district's reentry plan based on case data for Highland Park. We know that the safety of our students and staff weighs heavily on your mind and is your first priority. We appreciate your diligence and communication. Educators, support professionals, and our administrators are on the front lines of this crisis. In addition to Zoom meetings and phone calls, we each field hundreds of professional emails from our colleagues, students, students, caregivers, supervisors, and others nearly every day. Though they should not, these communications often go well beyond the contracted workday. The volunteer time that is being put in by our members and administrators to get the job done in these unprecedented times has never been higher. Imagine our members dismay at receiving several emails from the business office last week, assuring them that their emails about healthcare would be quote unquote "buried" if they sent them to the business office. This instruction arrived well after the October first date when open enrollment for healthcare was to begin. Throughout this entire pandemic, there was not one time that the superintendent said, "Your emails will be buried. Don't contact me." Not one time has the Board of Education, any other administrator in the school, or the association leadership said this. Yet during a healthcare pandemic, we were told not to email the business office for healthcare questions when our healthcare is undergoing one of the biggest changes in its history. With everyone receiving hundreds of emails each day on top of their normal work, the recent communication from the business office at best inspired a lack of confidence that our members' healthcare concerns are being properly addressed. At worst, it illustrates a lack of preparedness. The district is slated to save hundreds of thousands of dollars as our members enroll in new healthcare options. The new choices being offered will also provide our members with much-needed relief from rising premiums, a rare win-win in a year of continuous hardship. It is astonishing that the enrollment process has, was handled in a way that induced anxiety for our members. These concerns called to question what measures need to be put in place so members' questions can and will be addressed during a time when healthcare could not be more important. We look forward to speaking with Dr. Taylor on how our members can be best served when they have questions necessitating a business office response. As you know, the HPEA and our members are deeply invested in the success of our students. We will continue to collaborate with Dr. Taylor, the administration, and the board to ensure the safety of our students and members while giving our all to ensure the best possible educational outcomes during this challenging time. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. I will leave that to Dr. Taylor to, to work with you on so that we can arrive at a mutually beneficial solution. Thank you for expressing your concerns. I had a hand raised from Dr. Rob Scott earlier. It looks like he is no longer in the audience. All right, I'll move on. Oh, no, he is. Dr. Scott, would you like to speak?
I see you now. All right. Sure. I'm willing to speak.
Oh, if I could interrupt you for one second. I need everybody to say their name and their address, please. I forgot to mention that important detail.
Yeah, my name is Rob Scott. I live at twenty-five South Second Avenue in Highland Park. I'm a parent of three children in the district, and I just have a few comments with respect to the superintendent's report. So first, I heard a discussion of revisiting the standard for district opening or closing. And while it may be that we don't have the perfect standard now, I really just want to emphasize that I don't think changing that standard is something that should be done just by the central leadership team. But in fact, it should be done on the advice of public health experts and epidemiologists. And so I guess I would just ask if that standard's revisited, we need to know where the public health advice is coming from. I think that's really, really important. Obviously, the number of cases that are reported is relevant, but I also think the rate of changes in the reporting of cases is important, too. So as of today, we're down to just nineteen cases in the last week, which is below the standard, which, if that holds, bodes well for the reopening scheduled for the nineteenth. But not only, it also matters that it's not an increasing trend, right? So I hope that you seek out and report, you know, specifically the public health advice you're getting, and that this has not just become a political thing that the central leadership team is dealing with. Next, I just wanted to comment on the hybrid schooling. I really, really feel like this is ending up, many people have said this, I think I've said this before, I've said it in various ways, this hybrid plan is in so many ways the worst of all options, because it is actually just giving students that are in person only two days of in-person instruction a week. And I'm not sure how that helps with lots of specific needs of parents who really need their, their kid in school. So for instance, they can work. I also, I didn't hear, maybe I missed it, any discussion of, I understood there was supposed to be a pilot program for about sixty students where there would be childcare provided, and I wanted to hear on the status of that and potential expansion of that. That seems like a way to meet some of the needs of families that really just need their kid in school. I did hear some talk about how hard it is to find people, to find teachers, but I just wanted to like emphasize, I mean, I think it's really, really important that this district be seen as aggressively advertising that we need help, because I know if more teachers or more paras could be hired, we could meet the real needs of more people in this district. And my final two comments are, there's been a lot of discussion about the lower grades, about pre-K through third grade, and about in-person school. We've had the delay. And what is coming up is contemplation of the middle school and high school. And I just wanted to emphasize, the middle school and the high school is much, much harder problem to solve than the lower grades. And I didn't hear any discussion of what those plans would be. So I am, I do not understand how we are going to be able to have a hybrid reopening for the middle school and the high school without using the totally problematic livestream option at this point, because the middle school and the high school are organized differently. In the lower grades, you can designate remote teachers and in-person teachers. That does not seem to be possible in the middle school and high school. So I guess I would ask for some, you know, grappling with that. So I guess I would ask for some, you know, grappling with that problem now and maybe being realistic that we need to do remote or we need to do remote school and provide the opportunity for students who need to go to school to be able to do their remote school at the school site, if that makes sense. So go to the gym, sit down on tables that are set up there, be socially distanced, and engage in remote school there in remote classes. I think that's a better option than the, you know, livestream option. And finally, it's been publicized that East Brunswick School District has a pilot testing program with Middlesex County. And I know we submitted, some parents on the input committee submitted a statement. It was signed by six of us, asking for that kind of program to be explored by this district way back on August twenty-ninth. So I guess I'm really disappointed that it's not Highland Park School that is part of that Highland, the pilot program of of testing students to allow in-person school. So I guess I just wanted to ask the superintendent and the board about that, if something like that would be possible. And and those are my comments.
If you don't mind, Scott, I'll respond briefly on the testing. Those comments were well noted, Rob, from the from the parent input committee and the board, too, has hoped that we could put together a testing program. I know Dr. Taylor looked into it earlier in the year. Was not able to get any traction. I have a message into the East Brunswick Board President to see if if she can be helpful to us and to the county supervisors, I'm sorry, the county formerly known as Chosen Freeholders, now Commissioners, I think. So I'm trying to get in touch with them. I know that Scott has redoubled his efforts, and I believe we have the the borough leadership also looking into that. So it is a a goal shared by all of us to get that going. And I, too, am disappointed that it hasn't worked so far, but it's not for lack of interest in the in that as a goal. Scott, did you have anything else to say about testing?
I'm waiting on a call back from Victor Valeski. I reached out to him last week. But nothing yet, so hopefully we can get some traction on that. I only have one point I can share with Rob, and then I noted the other suggestions he's offered. And that's regarding the hybrid model at the middle and high school. I should have clarified, and I I hope I'm explaining this the way Rob's hoping I I will. We, I'm, we're prepared to stream a live video into the homes of kids who'll be staying home at the middle and high school level when we return those kids. My commitment to not livestream only applies to the elementary level.
Well, that's gonna be a disaster.
Well, thank you for that comment. We will certainly take it into account. You do have to recognize, Rob, that we have parents who are absolutely one hundred percent committed to live streaming at all age levels. And then we have parents who are a hundred percent committed to not live streaming. So what the board has asked Dr. Taylor to do is to do his research, you know, which he which he's doing and to continue doing it. Talking to other districts, seeing how it's going for them at different grade levels. I'm not going to make any commitments one way or the other here, but it is certainly something that is the object of considerable discussion in the administration, in the board, and in the parent community with a broadly divergent set of views on that. So that's all I want to say about that. The childcare program, I mean, I I certainly do hope that we can take steps to advertise more aggressively. I I can't tell you what those steps have been at this point, but I know I will consult with Dr. Taylor about whether there are any options available to us that we have not taken into account. Because yes, it is really important that we do whatever we can to try to staff that program. Just a note to board members, I'm gonna wait and hold board member questions until the public is finished speaking, if that's okay. Let's see. And I know, Dr. Taylor, you took down the rest of of Dr. Scott's points. So I will move on to Rebecca and Matt. I don't know who is first. Let's go to Rebecca Hirsch first, please. When you're ready.
Hi.
Hi.
Moving to the quieter part of my house. So yeah, thank you for hearing my comment. My comment is also about the hybrid model. You know, it's the the hybrid. So I have three. First of all, my name is Rebecca Hirsch. I live on Felton Avenue in Highland Park. I have three kids in the district. I'm speaking right now about the hybrid model for the Irving kids. I have a six-year-old at Irving. So for parents who really feel like their kids need some in-person instruction, the hybrid model, as it's currently, as it's currently presented, really offers the, an impossible situation for parents who can't be full-time teachers on the asynchronous days. And it's really, it really feels unworkable, you know, as I I so badly want to send my six-year-old back to school because he's just doing terribly in remote learning. But I don't know how to make the asynchronous days work. And I don't, you know, I I know that there are different opinions about live streaming, and I'm not going to talk about live streaming for or against it. But I want to know if there's anything that could be done to provide live instruction to the children on their at-home days. Because for a six-year-old, asynchronous days are not, you know, they're not self-guided. There it means that, you know, I don't go to work those days. And it feels like we're being forced to make a choice between all remote, which a lot of us don't want. But it's the only way to get five days of instruct, live instruction for our children who really need it. And they need the consistency of schedule, and they need, they need to be engaged every day. So even if we think our children need it in person, the hybrid model really makes it unworkable on those days. So I just want to, I I don't know, I don't have the answers beyond a livestream situation, but I want to know if there's anything that we can think of as a board and as a district to not just sort of really abandon those kids on those asynchronous days. Because it's asking, it's asking parents to become full-time teachers on those days. And it's not possible, you know, for most of us who are really trying to hold down jobs. That's all. It's just, I really, I really want that to be considered because it's not the hybrid model as it's being presented is really not workable, even for people who want it. That's all.
Thank you, Rebecca. I I hear what you're saying, and I know Dr. Taylor does, too. I I also hope that we can work out something.
Like maybe those kids can join the remote classes those days or something, you know, so they can have. I mean, I don't know if that would make the remote classes too big. I I don't know. I don't have the answers. But you know, the the at-home days are not are not workable, even for people who really want their kids to be back in the building, even if it's just two days a week.
I hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I have hope. Like what I said earlier, I have hoped that the plan we have to have the paraprofessionals working in the classroom supervising kids to free up the teacher for periods of time will work for those kids, Rebecca, like yours, who might be home for two days sporadically to have provide interactive instruction throughout.
You know, we really need, you know, the even the four hours of instruction is not enough. Like, we really need these kids to have a solid block of time where they're just engaging with school the whole time. And they, it's not, you know, getting them on and off of Zooms all morning while we're trying to work. And they're distracted by all the crap at home. And it's just, it's so, it's so hard. It's so hard. I don't, that is really.
So I've learned a lot as a superintendent in the last five months in terms of leadership. This is the first experience I've had in my years as superintendent, which I've had such dichotomous set of opinions about all kinds of matters. I've got plenty of people who don't, who'd say that four hours is too much. And I've got people who want more than four hours. So ultimately, what I've had to do is consult people around me, consider everything I'm hearing, and then make executive decisions. I can't just leave it up to one opinion or the other.
Well, I should say that for the first graders, they're not actually getting four hours. They're getting about three, which, whatever, that's fine. But it's a four-hour window where they have a sort of set, set schedule and routine every day, and they're sort of expected to be at school and engage the whole time and not just like randomly on and off, you know, for randomly scheduled fifteen-minute spurts once or twice. So, you know, I really think that the consistency of routine and is really, is really important for those at-home days. And they're, you know, they're not doing four hours. They they go nine to twelve-thirty, and they have, you know, usually about two twenty-minute breaks or something. So it's like three or a little less than three hours.
I think, I mean, what I'm hearing you say is that predictability is important. And if we have sort of intermittent contact with paraprofessionals at different times that are perhaps sent out the night before, that's obviously very difficult for people. And Rebecca, it might be the best we can do, but I hear what you're saying, that that is kind of impossible for for parents to say like, okay, so at nine fifteen and twelve-thirty tomorrow, you'll meet with your paraprofessional. That that's, that's, that's a lot to ask of parents, and we'll.
Right. And then there's also asynchronous work that we're supposed to be doing with the kids. We're not teachers, and our kids often, even if we are, our kids don't respond to us the way they respond to teachers. And I just feel like, okay, from nine to one, like, that's when I'm in school. Especially for these little kids who are really have no idea what's going on. Anyway.
Right. I hear you, and it will be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's such a helpful response, I know. All right, moving on. Matthew Hirsch, member of the public.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matthew Hirsch, three thirty-three Felton Avenue here in Highland Park. I just wanted to, I'm a member of the Bartle PTO. I did, I did just want to note, though, that for an innocuous announcement, you know, waiting ninety minutes for the first public comment could be done a little bit better. I reached out to several of you and responded, so we we appreciate that. But especially now, when there's so many concerns with the district, and when you do have these at-home meetings, it's important to take advantage of this kind of remote situation where I think you might get more engagement for parents and and even students to participate in the public meetings to open up public comment sooner like there was last meeting. I noticed that there was more comment at the last meeting about public comment than there was about the other important issues that are being raised by 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 parents. But that being said, at nine fifteen, the Bartle PTO invites you to pumpkin painting, October nineteenth through twenty-third at the Bartle School on the side of the lawn of South Fifth. Each Bartle student will receive one pumpkin to paint brushes and paint, and paint will be provided. Masks required to participate. The notice, I believe, is being sent home, and also you can check out the Bartle PTO Facebook page. Just search for Bartle School PTO. And there's a new website. The Bartle School PTO has a website. That's, it's a long URL, so I would just hope that maybe anybody listening can go navigate to the Bartle PTO page, find the website. Thank you to Ms. Drackman for for developing the site. The teachers have been an incredible asset to the Bartle PTO. It's a real, it's a real collaboration. And so I would encourage anybody to go there. The one, you know, comment I would, I would just make about 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 the, you know, I am, I am exceptionally ambivalent about reopening school or any of that. I'm, I'll be, I'll, I'll remain deferential to the professionals and to the policymakers on that. But I, one thing that I would hope we might be able to consider is just simply a longer school day in general. You know, four hours, you know, remote, we're, you know, our household, you know, we're fortunate. We have a, we have a, we have a kindergartner who's enrolled in private kindergarten because of, because of the current situation in the district. And we have fourth and sixth graders, we have a Bartle student and a middle school student. Remote learning is is working. We have found that it is, you know, we have found our teachers to be responsive. It's, we've been able to, you know, keep up with our 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 kids' work, you know, using, using Genesis. So that's been very helpful. But I will say, though, that, you know, the half-day, you know, even now with school starting later at nine o'clock, which which I'm supportive of because I think there's a public health aspect to kind of starting school on the, you know, at a later time. I know the district had been considering that for a long time, kind of doing it a little bit, but now actually doing it. You know, the one o'clock stop time is early. And I would just hope that, you know, moving forward, if we do go to all remote, which I fully expect that we will continue to be all remote, just based on the reception of of this board by by some of the concerns of the public, that that you do consider a longer school day, just a normal school day, you know, two-thirty. So that's, that's, that's it. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, Matt. Understood. Can I ask, Matt, that you might consider contacting the principal and having the PTO website posted on the, or asking if she would be so kind as to post the Bartle website on the Bartle School PTO page? I just Googled Bartle PTO, and I got to the Bartle School Home of the Dolphins PTO, and it has like a couple of flyers on it. It's obviously like not a maintained page, so that might be helpful.
Great idea. Hey, Matt, can you, can you send me the link when you get a chance?
Yes, the Bartle School PTO page is actually a, it's a private group, so you can search for it. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, maybe we could get a link on the on the school page. I didn't explain that very well.
Yeah, just just email me when you get a chance, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Matt. And your other more substantive comment is under advisement.
Pumpkins were the first thing.
Yeah, 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 I got the pumpkins. Awesome. Thank you. Michelle, like I said before, I'm gonna actually ask board members to hold their comments until we finish with public comment. Seth Copperdale, are you there? There you are.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for a really good meeting, and I appreciate getting on this call and just hearing that the breadth and depth of the kinds of things people are thinking about across the board. I I got in tonight just, you know, only with frustrations about reopening. But it's nice to to sit in a space long enough to hear about other aspects of school life, too. So thank you. One thing that I didn't intend to say, but I'm mindful as I heard some of those budget things of an increase in the number of bedside education things, and I think we should keep our eye toward that just based on our perspective in this community, the types of depression and sadness that is alive in middle and high schoolers in particular seems to be on the rise. And I I fully expect that those kinds of, not just dollar numbers, but those sorts of impacts on young lives is really like probably the most significant thing of this moment from from my perspective. But I want to make two comments. One is, I, Dr. Taylor, I listened hard to try to understand the dynamics of the spacing about why it has to be a hybrid model, going back to Irving. And, you know, I just couldn't make heads or tails of it. And I, I, I would love, in a different setting, to sit down and understand the the math on on those rooms. But to me, a hybrid for a return is worse than no return at all. I think that, one, those parents who have the, who have been waiting desperately for a return to five-day, this is when they give up and they go to some Christian school in the next town that will pay a reasonable tuition or will find some other school, because all the private places are are going strong in in person. And there's a lot of people who are gonna opt for that. They've been waiting, 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 and they're not gonna be able to wait anymore. And they'll feel like I I have to get back to work full-time, and my kid needs to be back in school. Whether it's the kid issue or the parent issue, one of those things is gonna drive folks away from the district. And I believe that that'll have an impact going forward, that enrollment in future years will be impacted by decisions we make in this year about whether or not we can provide, because once kids are set in space and have a good experience in another space, even if it's a private space, you stick with continuity, and people are desperate for continuity right now. So if they, a kid likes the why that they settle into and they touch in, they're gonna keep them there. That one, by the way, is expanding as we speak. So that's just, I I really feel like adding tents outside. I've been saying this since July. But having some extra spaces outside, even if you're moving around, you're there for a little while, you know, for enough, for a couple more months, you could do that, you know. And then I heard you talk about this, this after-school space that's gonna be available. Why couldn't those spaces also, you know, you could get, you you named, I think, three different spaces in Irving. And some of those are big spaces. Could they, could they be divided and have, you know, one class on one side of the gym and one class on the other side of the gym? Is there some way, if there's gonna be a go-back-to-school way, to have it be a five-day instead of this, this mayhem? Because it's, it's not gonna meet anybody's need. So anyway, I'm disappointed with the the Irving thing, so I'll just leave it at that. And I'm really thankful to begin hearing some comments about middle and high school. I didn't say what what the street address I am. I'm twenty-three South Second. And, you know, I'm right next to Rob Scott, who's on the call, and we're always kind of at it with each other about our opinions on these things. But Rob and I both agree that having an option for people to be back five days a week, even if it means sitting remotely together kind of near other people, is preferable to not having that option out there. Currently, every day I've got, you know, six to ten kids in my backyard doing that, kids who need to be somewhere, you know, and there's no reason the school can't do the same thing with with in in spaces. big spaces with paras, just because being around other people matters and is important. I hope for the thing that Rob screamed about and said that'll be a disaster, I totally disagree with you on that, Rob. And, but I, I just voiced that I do agree with the, the value of back five days with a learning center kind of model for those who wanna be around other people.
Thank you very much, Seth. Appreciate that comment. Let's see, Andrew Zappo, please.
Hi, Andrew Zappo, one thirty-one Johnson Street. Thank you, guys, for your service. I just wanted to put my comments out there that I disagree about extending the school day beyond what it already is. I think it should stay throughout the duration that it is. We're about three to four weeks away from losing most of our daylight. And if you extend, if you basically cut away that free time that does exist right now in the afternoon, you know, sometimes that's all the socialization time that these kids have since they're not going to school anymore. And it has to be kept, because honestly, that's the only thing that I would say might keep, you know, some of the kids, give the kids the ability to actually get out of the house, see their friends. And once the daylight disappears, you know, that's gonna shrink. So with a lot of sports activities, you know, maybe not exactly the same as they had been, I think extending it any longer really is not a good idea. And I don't, you know, I have respect for the parents. I know it's hard, because, you know, childcare is a difficult thing, and school does provide childcare, whether or not, you know, and that's just how it works. But you have to make sure that the kids have enough time to see their friends, because they can't, what happens in Zoom, it's not the same as what happens in real life. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Wish we could somehow accommodate both interests, because I agree with both points. My kids depend on that time after school. Rebecca Hirsch.
Hi, um, I forgot to, um, this is Rebecca Hirsch again, Felton Avenue. I forgot to say one thing that confused me. It seems weird that, um, the after, as my, you know, I rely on after-school. I, my kids have, all three of my kids have gone to after-school till six o'clock every day for the entire time that they've been in Highland Park schools. But it did seem weird to me that the reason for not using the extra spaces at Irving was because the after-school program needed it. You know, if we're making trade-offs, it seems like real schools should be prioritized over after-school. And if using those spaces means that, you know, six-year-olds can go to school five days a week, then maybe we should just do that, focus on that first before being like, oh, it can't be done because of the after-school program. So that was, that was the thing I forgot to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent point. All right, other, other public commenters, and then I'm gonna ask board members to pipe up if they'd like to. And give you guys a minute in the public to raise your hand? Nope. Okay, I know some board members wanted to speak. If you wouldn't mind raising your hands again, so I remember who you are. Michelle? Go ahead, please.
So, yeah, I'm, since the beginning of this quarantine, I've been thinking that we need to think very creatively about solutions. And that's gonna look different for different age groups, of course. But one of the, you know, I guess philosophical debates that we've yet to have is what does school an adequate education, which is what we're supposed to be providing, what does that look like? And I understand that there are practical needs, especially the practical needs of working parents, where they rely on school as childcare. But I don't know that we've ever had the conversation about where we expend our limited resources. You know, we don't have a federal childcare program. Other countries do. We don't have a state-run childcare program. We don't have lots of different social safety nets. And that's the, you know, accumulated reality of the last forty years of austerity. So the public schools are now being asked to, you know, kind of connect all these dots and fill in all these blanks during this pandemic. And no one, no one feels like these things are unreasonable to ask for. But I do feel like we've yet to have that conversation about what we would like to do in order to buy what we have as a district to, you know, to give to the right community. So, can you hear me?
No, we're losing your audio.
My video, I think I'm gonna shut the video off.
Okay, that's the last, like, two sentences.
So I shut the video off, maybe that will help.
Yeah, better now.
Sorry.
Thanks.
So what I was saying was, we, we've yet to have the conversation about where we really should be directing our resources to meet the needs of the students in the best way possible. So what we need to do as a board, you know, by law, is provide an adequate education. Fortunately, that might not include, you know, full-time childcare as it did when we had in-person schooling. But again, you know, we cannot, as a school district, we cannot provide all of the different resources that are needed by the families in, in, you know, their daily lives. That's not to say that those resources are not reasonable to ask for, and those things aren't reasonable to ask for. But we have to, we have to decide, are we providing, you know, an education, an adequate education? Or are we providing basic needs for families during this time of pandemic? Because it doesn't look like we can do both. So I'm proposing that we have that conversation. It's kind of a philosophical conversation, I suppose, but as a board, I think we need to have that conversation and decide what, what we need to do. So what is, what is the need and how do we fill it? I just, I don't have the answers, but I think we need to have that conversation.
I mean, I feel like that's, we've been trying to figure out all those things. Is there anything in particular that, that you feel like we're sort of directing our resources the wrong way? I mean, of course, there's always.
No, I, I understand that we've been having that conversation, but clearly, the public is not understanding that we're having that conversation, because we're asking, you know, the public to come with their comments, and they're coming with, please, God, we need childcare. Or they're coming with, please, God, we need our kids to be engaged and learning, because they're failing, you know, they're depressed, they're anxious, they need to be engaged, and they need to be, you know, shown some ray of hope, because they're really kind of sagging. So that's, that's my, my concern, is that the public is asking, like you said, for such divergent things. And we cannot please everyone all the time. So what do we want to do? Do we, do we need to provide childcare? And then education takes kind of a back step a little bit, like maybe we need to put a pause on, you know, the rigor of our curriculum? What, what do we, what do we need and want for the district? Because it's not gonna look the same in another district. And unfortunately, we're not getting the help that we need from above, so.
Okay. Did anybody wanna comment on that? Or is that a large conversation we should save for another, more expansive time? I guess my comment would be, I certainly hope that we're not trying to sacrifice education for childcare, but I do think it's important, you know, our schools, one of the functions they provide and its legitimate function is childcare and socialization, and those are, you know, that's part of education. And so for me, I would hope that we can provide that as part of our, what do they call it? A, forgotten what the Constitution says, a fair and reasonable and adequate education? I would think that childcare would be part of that, especially for little kids who need to socialize. I mean, that's what kindergarten is all about, right? It's.
Yeah.
Yeah, Garcia?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to say that the, the reason I brought up, and, you know, that I specifically got on that Middlesex County meeting, we, because I did wanna see, like, are we doing something wrong? Like, are other districts in this county able to pull off some phenomenal thing for their students and families that we're not able to do? And like, really, the resounding answer that came back was no. Like, no one's able to provide five days of instruction for their kids. It's, it, where they're able to do that is places like Hundreddon County, where they have no, like, next to no virus, and they've had next to no virus this entire time, you know. And it's really important to point out, I think, that the board didn't make some decision to not go in a couple of weeks ago. The virus made a decision for us to not go back in a couple of weeks ago, because the virus spiked. Nobody set out to sabotage plans to allow students to go back into the schools. So, you know, what I took away from that Middlesex meeting was everyone is doing the best they can to get kids back in, and it's really, really, really hard. And the districts that have been able to do it, even in a, in a small hybrid kind of way, it's been because there's been some miraculous perfect storm of circumstances where the number of kids matched the number of teachers. And one of the big issues that we had at Irving was that the number of kids did not match the number of teachers, right? We can't have sixteen kids in a small class, right? And a public school is gonna function different than a private school is going to function. You know, at a private school, if you have more kids, you may be able to get more teachers, because you can hire more teachers, or you can, it, it doesn't work that easily in a, in a public school, especially at that younger grade, right? It's easier for a daycare center to limit it to ten kids and to, you know, open up another section if they have ten more kids and get, that's not, as much as we would like larger public entities to be that flexible, we're just not. It's a lot harder. So I completely understand everybody's frustrations and the frustration that, you know, I want this, but my next-door neighbor wants that, and, you know, but I think we all have to go into this with the, the mindset that everybody at every level at this point is doing the best they can for themselves, their neighbors, you know, their constituents, their, you know, their teachers, their, you know, like, everybody's in the same boat. We're all in the same wacky, wacky boat and just trying to do the best we can.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to our board action items. Michelle, am I correct? Curriculum had no items this week?
Yeah, I just, I see that there's a hand up.
Oh, I'm, oh, you know what? We'll wait to the next public comment period for that, if you don't mind. Sorry, Rebecca. Let's move on to our action items.
Sure.
Finance and facilities will be first, please. Whenever you're ready, Mark.
Yeah, I was muted. Pardon me. I'd like to move items one through twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Linda, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Marasti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFavendie-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Guys, I apologize. I forgot to ask before the vote if anybody had comments or concerns. Let me open that up now. If someone did have a comment or concern, we can decide what to do at that time. Does anybody have a comment?
You did ask, and after I, after I presented them, you did ask the board.
Yeah, usually we do it, though, again, before the vote.
Okay, that's fair.
So I just wanted to, does anybody have a concern that would lead them to perhaps change their vote?
Oh, God, no.
I'm hoping no. We could always have a motion.
No.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, Rob Magaziner, do I see your lips moving?
Just that we, we had that opportunity earlier.
We do, yeah.
I think that's when we, I think that's when we discuss these things.
We typically have another, do you have any questions thing before this vote? Perhaps my memory is wrong. In my effort to finally understand the agenda, and I, I'm fairly certain that we do, but.
We did.
Hope you're wrong. All right, I'm glad nobody has any vote-changing comments to make. Personnel, Chris, would you move the personnel items, please?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through sixteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or concerns? No? Linda, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Marasti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFavendie-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Thanks, Linda. Mark, policies, please.
Yeah, I'd like to move items one through two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, discussion, questions? All right, Linda, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Ms. Marasti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFavendie-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you, Linda. I see no equity and excellence items to move. So let's move on to our board liaison reports. Rather than reading through all of these, Scott, did you want to pipe up there? I thought I saw you.
No, 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 I was just gonna, I was ready to go with library and all, just to say that we're gonna be uploading the information, it's not there yet, so you can, squareway library and.
Perfect. Were there any other of these that involve you? I, we have library, what was the other one? There's the, I was gonna just go through board members and Scott, rather than read through all of these and say, is there a comment? Scott, Municipal Drug and Alcohol Alliance, you.
No. No meeting, so nothing to share.
All right. Monique, did you have any liaison reports to share?
No, I don't.
Mr. Woodward? Going by my screen here. Mark, Krieger?
No.
No? All right. Ms. Prus, I don't think we've set, set you up yet with a liaison. All right, we need to do that. Fortunately, almost nobody is meeting right now. Not almost nobody, most of them aren't meeting. Michelle, liaison report from you?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Magaziner? Oh, HPEF, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
Thank you, HPEF.
So, right, so the, the day following our September meeting, the HPEF did meet. That was the fourteenth or fifteenth, something in September, something like that. And Scott did give the foundation membership an update on what we're talking about now and had a chance to answer questions from them. The main thing that I can recall about that discussion was that we are, Scott is guiding the foundation to consider a number of, I guess, a larger number of smaller grants as opposed to a smaller number of larger grants that we typically would do. And that, I think, is related to what we're going through now. Scott, if you wanna chime in on that, but that, I think that was, and then tomorrow night, we actually have another, another meeting, so we'll update you next month on that. But Scott, if you have anything further on that?
Well, I just wanna elaborate on what you said. I'm really, really thankful that the foundation recognized that our teachers are putting a lot of money out now to purchase items that they wouldn't have to purchase if they'd not been teaching from home. Things like setting up a studio with a better mic or a second camera, a second monitor. So the foundation's giving three hundred and fifty-dollar grants to any teacher who applies and can show that there'll be, that the money will be used for, for good intent. All they've gotta do is apply. The foundation essentially rubber stamps the application to be approved, and then the teachers have to come through with, with receipts. So far, I've gotten one, two, three, four, five, six, seven takers, seven teachers have already applied. So really, really thankful to the foundation.
Great.
Yes.
That's fantastic. That's great to know. Mr. Rizlevich, do you have any reports from us for Green Team or any of your other?
Not for the Green Team.
Board of Health?
No, but Board of Health, yes, there was a meeting just a couple of days ago. I think the biggest thing from them was they are coming out with some guidelines related I think the biggest thing from them was they were coming out with some guidelines related to Halloween and trick or treating and they were hoping that they could use the schools to help disseminate some of those guidelines once they, uh, complete their document that they're going to prepare for the town. The, uh, the other, uh, in relation to the school opening, they're very happy that the school is taking a very measured approach prior to opening and they, uh, hope that we continue to, uh, monitor things going on in town and where things are at as we continue opening because their, their concern, of course, is, you know, uh, how opening the schools will affect, uh, the, uh, what's the word? The rate of transmissivity, trip, can't say that word.
Transmissivity, I like that, though.
Yeah. In the town, so they're, they're very happy that we're taking a very measured approach to opening the schools.
Cool. Um, Scott, I'm sure they'll be in touch with Scott independently about, uh, getting those guidelines disseminated to our students.
Yeah, they're, they're still.
To agree on those guidelines.
Yeah, they, they were still in development as of Thursday, so I don't think they, uh, had something yet that they were hoping to publish yet.
Okay. Excellent. Um, let's see, oh, I feel like all my squares have changed. I might've missed somebody. Darcy, yes.
See, um, yeah, I can just flush out a little bit. My, uh, Middlesex County School Boards meeting, uh, last week, um, there was a little bit more discussion about the, uh, upcoming conference. And I think it's important to note since, uh, we've already been signed up, which I think is great, that, um, not only can you attend the sessions, um, between the 20th and the 22nd, but that all of those sessions are going to be recorded and then they're going to be made available, um, essentially for the next year. So if you look through the agenda and there's something that looks really particularly interesting, but you can't make it at the time that it's happening, no problem, it'll be there and it'll be available. So there may be some that we even want to look through and all, you know, like as a group decide, oh, let's all take a look at this one and, you know, have a conversation or different committees can take a look at the schedule and see if there's anything that's particularly, um, that's particularly interesting to their, um, to their specific committee. Um, so I wanted to make sure to relay that. And, uh, they also gave a legislative update, um, which was a little bit interesting because that's not something I've been following terribly closely lately. Um, so the two pieces of legislation that they updated us on was one that that was pertaining to high school and middle school col- coaches, uh, which New Jersey School Boards Association was actively lobbying against. Um, it basically would have afforded coaches some sort of kind of like modified tenure. Um, and that bill just kind of fizzled and didn't go anywhere. Um, but there is a bill that did make it through the legislature and has been signed by the governor and that pertains to, uh, private contractors. Um, so it's something that I'm sure Linda and Scott are going to have to take a closer look at because it will pertain to any of our, any contracts we have with private vendors such as our food service or maintenance or I would assume even, um, down to like what we just approved tonight, swing and, um, source for teachers, um, and subjects those contracts to, um, collective bargaining kind of, uh, issues. So, um, that will be an interesting one for us to all take a look at and see how that's going to impact any, um, current contracts. Any current contracts are fine, but I think when those contracts are up and then up for renewal, when, is when that will become an issue. Um, and then I already discussed a couple of times, um, the information that we talked about related to COVID-19. Um, and one last issue, uh, that did come up, and this is from my delegate assembly position, there is going to be a virtual delegate assembly in November, I think on November 21st. Um, and from what I've seen, there's only one resolution that they're even considering and it seems to have something to do with, uh, what happens if a currently seated board member is running for another position somewhere? Do they have to resign their seat or do they? So it looked a little funky. So when I have, uh, if that goes through the resolution subcommittee and gets through, I will share that with all of you for your consideration for November. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. And I believe I, uh, we slash I missed the deadline for us to come up with resolutions. So.
I think we've been a little busy with other stuff and I think all of us have too, because I was like, it looked like that was the only resolution that was put forward and, you know.
Well, we're a company.
Terribly consequential to me, so, uh, I think the majority of the districts across the state are pretty preoccupied with other matters at the moment, so.
Good, excellent.
And I did write up everything, um, and sent it to all you guys.
Yeah, thanks.
So you should have access to it.
I left out the bill number, so I can actually look it up. I never remember when you say it.
I put links in there too, so you can.
Oh, perfect.
Read the bills yourself at your leisure.
Thank you, Darcy, that'd be great. Uh, let's see, all my, you know, I was going in order of where, where you guys appear on my screen and now everything's changed. Monique, did I miss you? Did you have a liaison report?
Uh, no, you didn't miss me. I, I don't think you did.
I did, okay, okay. Um, my committees are on hiatus or being reorganized or just not meeting, so I have nothing.
Same here, I can't really speak to all the different reasons, but pretty much in that realm.
Just a pole miscellany of, of not meeting. Did I miss anybody? Anybody have a liaison report that we did not get to discuss? No, okay.
Yeah, I, I wanted to add something, Anne.
I, I thought I, I didn't notice it. I'm so sorry.
No, it's fine. I, I actually forgot, but, um, there is, uh, something that came up through, um, school boards that I passed along to Scott. There's.
Turn your video off.
A short film contest.
Hey, no.
That is, oh, sorry.
You get to start that sentence again.
Okay.
Yes, perfect.
Um, so there's a short film contest, oh, sorry. Okay. The, through school boards, New Jersey school boards, there's a short for middle and high school students. I think that's five minutes or less. So I passed that along to Scott and he was super enthusiastic about sending that out to everyone, so.
Right.
Um, that was the only thing that came through, I just wanted to mention that. And it looks really creative and fun and, um, does not require social connectivity.
Can be done remotely, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, um, I was pretty excited to find that too. So I'm looking forward to seeing any submissions that we have coming from our students in Highland Park.
That's awesome. And hopefully we have some students that are already sort of like excited about filmmaking, right? We had that filmmaking class, had it offered several times, I think. Um, so I hope there's some students out there that are going to get to work on that. That's great. Thank you. All right, any questions or comments about the liaison reports? If not, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the president's report. I have none. Um, I do have some, oh, old business. Who has old business for me? Seeing none, moving on to new business. All right, so as you heard at the beginning of the meeting, uh, the, God, I don't even know, I've forgotten the name of the agency that does this, but they've come out with new emergency regulations governing the conduct of virtual board meetings and we are required to adopt a resolution, uh, concerning public comments at those meetings. So in case anybody is, wants to discuss public comment any further, we can, we'll discuss it now. I'm going to, uh, read a resolution that I am going to move, we adopt. I'll read it first, uh, we can discuss, people can propose amendments, then I will formally move it. This is just to bring us into compliance, uh, with the new regulations. And meanwhile, um, we are going to be working on a, a policy, you know, formal numbered policy that goes in our handbook that would govern the same conduct, con- content. So this resolution that I'm about to read to you, this very exciting resolution, uh, would be in effect until we adopt a policy, uh, on the same topic. All right, so I'm going to share my screen with you guys. Oh, I can't, oh, no, I can. Share screen, where is it? There we go. Oh, did I do it? No, there. All right, shared screen. Um, these are just my notes so you can read along. Um, I'm going to propose we adopt this resolution pursuant to the newly enacted NJAC 5 colon 39 dash 1H, Emergency Remote Meeting Protocol for Local Public Bodies. The Board resolves as follows with respect to procedures for and requirements of public comment made during a remote public meeting as well as for public comments submitted in writing ahead of the remote public meeting. I'm cribbing from the regulation here. During virtual public meetings, the board will aim to automatically mute the microphones of all members of the public except when they're making public comment. I added aim there because I guess we weren't able to actually consistently automatically mute people, but that's our goal. The president or other presiding officer will announce when a public comment period begins. In order to comment, a member of the public should raise his virtual zoom hand or turn on his camera and wave physically at it until recognized. Once the presiding officer calls on a member of the public, the board will unmute their microphone or the member of the public can do so himself and they may begin speaking. Members of the public may, of course, comment on any topic, but are expected to avoid inappropriate behavior such as using obscenities and sustained shouting that is specifically required to be part of our resolution. If after a warning, a commenter continues to engage in misconduct, the board will mute the commenter's microphone and return to the commenter later in the public comment period. If the disruptive commenter is the last member of the public to speak during a comment period, that comment period will end and the commenter will be welcome to return to make public comment at the next available period. If after a warning, a public commenter engages in visually inappropriate conduct, the board will turn off the commenter's video feed for the remainder of the meeting. Members of the public, and this is another new point, this is actually a content full point here, members that we are required to include, members of the public may also submit written comments to the Board of Education to be read aloud during public comment period. In order to submit comments, please email us at board@hpschools.net and clearly state that you want your comment to be read out loud publicly during public comment period. If we receive pub, uh, repetitive public comments, we may exercise our discretion to summarize them rather than read each one in its entirety. All right, that is the end. Would anybody care to object, amend, add, subtract? I can tell you that 99% of this is what the regulation states.
We want to get a second first?
Oh, I didn't move it yet, I was just asking.
Oh, I see, I thought you were moving it.
No, I'll, I'll call on you when it's time, Chris Woodward. Okay, now I'm going to move it, hearing, hearing no complaints. Uh, and I hear, is Chris, uh, willing to second? Second, all right. Uh, could we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Ms. Marasti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yep.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFavendee Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
So just as a reminder, for the benefit of the public, you can now email us written comments in advance of the meeting, uh, board@hpschools.net and please do state or indicate in some clear way that you want your comment to be read publicly. We will not just read any comment received, we'll only read ones that say, please read my comment publicly at the board meeting. Okay, uh, that's all I have for new business. Is there anyone else? Oh, Chris Woodward. I suddenly got an announcement on my screen for the first time, Chris Woodward, board member, racing. Where did that come from? I couldn't.
Well, I, you know, the, the issue of having remote meetings, uh, came up earlier.
Yes, I forgot, yeah.
I, I would just like to say that I, I, I hope we continue to have only remote meetings. For the reason that, you know, as a community, we, we have to decide which of the in-person activities that we normally do, uh, we value the most. Uh, we can't expect to continue all of those activities during the pandemic. And the activities that involve children should be the highest priority. And every hour that we spend in a board meeting, talking to other adults, takes away an hour that teachers could be spending with their children. So, you know, I mean, my, my wife and I, you know, are, are teaching, we've both said we are willing to teach in person in the spring. I'm not willing to have a faculty meeting in this, in, you know, with other faculty meetings in person because I, I don't think it's a priority. It's something that, that board can do perfectly well remotely. And I, I hope that goes for faculty meetings in this district as well, that the teachers are not meeting with each other in person because that's something that they can do via Zoom.
Uh, Mark?
Yeah, so actually, um, I, I, I wanted to say a couple of other things briefly, but I agree with Chris, um, is all I wanted to say first. The second thing I wanted to say is, um, the policy, I read the, uh, state regulation earlier today, all seven pages of it, yuck. Um, but, um, it does say some other things that are interesting. So the policy, when it comes forward, dear board members, is going to be somewhat more to read, but it's pretty comprehensive and it's not bad. And then I would just ask you to send me a copy of this. I don't know if I have a editable copy of your doc, but if you could send that, it'll be a good starting place for the committee.
Yeah, absolutely. I, mine only deals with public comment because that was the only thing we had to adopt a resolution about. We, I certainly were free to adopt a policy that goes into all the details of.
Yep, I, I understand, but just get me this and I'll start with that and we'll, we'll get together and make a more formal policy.
Will do, sounds good.
And thank you, thanks for doing this today, it's great.
Oh, of course.
Really appreciate it.
I really, I worked on the language, you know, at length.
It's really good.
Thank you so much. Uh, who, there was somebody, oh, Michelle, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I first wanted to say that I agree with Chris. I think that making things available on Zoom makes, um, life more, you know, uh, convenient, but beyond that, I think it, it does provide accessibility. I mean, right now we have 32 participants, um, not including, I guess, the 11 of us. But when's the last time we had, you know, 22 people at a public meeting? I think, um, that proves my point that it's, you know, more accessible to the general public. And I think that it is, you know, convenient for, for everyone, but, um, also, uh, just wanted to agree with Chris on the, um, on the fact that, you know, we do need to prioritize, as I said before, um, you know, when we, when we take the risk of going out, um, into the public and, and spending our time, the limited time that we have. But the other thing that I wanted to ask was about the, uh, Board of Health that up had, um, reported on. Because he mentioned something about the Board of Health being, you know, very happy with, um, our kind of conservative approach on returning to school. And someone, you know, in our, um, in our emails had said that they were confused about the infection that we have coming through, you know, the, the 21 days.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. Would you mind if we put a pin on that discussion and just finish the discussion of, um, the virtual board meeting situation or did you want to tie that in?
Yeah, it just, it had to do with the public health, so I thought, I should have asked it previous.
Okay, so it's about whether we should move to an in-person board meeting?
No, no.
Put a pin in that then and just go back to it in like two seconds? I just want to see if there's a consensus on the part of the board to remain virtual for now?
Sure.
Is that okay? But unless, if that, if it, if it was going to bear on that, then.
No, I don't think it's going to bear on it, but it was part of the conversation. It's not necessary for me to say so right now, though.
Oh, no, I want you to say it. I just wanted to sort of just finish up with this topic, if you don't mind, otherwise I'll get lost, we'll go on forever. My memory is not what it used to be. Other comments about whether we should consider moving to an in-person, uh, board meeting format?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just make it clear that I was not suggesting that we do so. I just thought it was very interesting that other boards are, um, and I thought it was worthy of having a conversation. And, I mean, I think Chris's logic is flawless, quite frankly, um, and I think that's a great message to put out to the public, that we're not, we're not not meeting in public because, you know, we're, you know, for whatever, but that we have to prioritize what happens in public and what doesn't happen in public. And the place to prioritize is to have the kids back as much as possible and to reduce risk where we can. the kids back as much as possible and to reduce risk where we can. So this is a good way of continuing to reduce risk. So.
Yeah, I 100% agree. Anybody feel strongly differently? Want to express that? Nope. Okay, Michelle, let's move on. Sorry. I apologize for cutting you off. Go ahead.
No, no, not at all. I was just wondering if Rob had any more information about why the Board of Health was thinking that, you know, what the school does impacts the infection rate in the community and vice versa, because there had been some concern from parents that we were keeping kids away from the school because of the, you know, infection rate and the numbers that Dr. Taylor had talked about, the 21 within three days or whatever. And there was some, some question about why that impacted what our decisions were on bringing the kids back into the buildings. So I thought maybe Rob had some intel that he could share with us.
I wouldn't say it's intel because, you know, stepping away from it by a couple of days, I'm already clouding what I heard in the meeting with my, my own opinion and my own views on it. I mean, we share our school district with our community. I mean, they don't operate separate from each other. You know, we, we, we are all part of the same district. We are the largest employer in the town. I don't think it's necessarily possible for us to separate our school district from our town community. And I think in the same respect, our town community can't be separated from our school district. So I think that if we're looking at positivity rates in our town, we also have to look at how that could affect our own schools. And if we have positivity in our schools, how that would affect our town. So I think the Board of Health, which I think for many reasons is a little bit more conservative in terms of how they are approaching this pandemic because any thing that comes about, you know, is alarming. You know, they, they don't take a preg-, what's the right word? They're, they're not, they're, they're very pragmatic about this pandemic. You know, so they are looking out for everyone's best interest. So if there are positive cases within the, within the town, I think they're looking at that not just as a model to say, all right, that's separate from the school. That anything that's happening in the town has an impact on the schools. So I think they are hoping that we can maintain a very pragmatic approach to how we reopen the schools with the same understanding that they would like to see the schools reopen because it impacts social and emotional well-being of the students who use our schools. That they're very happy that we had the program during the summer for our social and emotional well-being. That we are offering those services to students when they need them. You know, they're, they're not thinking, you know, along the lines of, no, we just can't have school. But they are also looking for us to be very educated about how we approach reopening the schools.
That's the question, right, is where is the line? Obviously, if there's 1,000 cases in Highland Park, we have to close the schools because it's going to spread here, or it already has spread here and we just don't know about it yet. If there's two cases in Highland Park and they're, you know, among people at a senior citizen center who don't leave that, that area, then that might be different. So that, this is a struggle for us, right? Is figuring out where the line is.
Well, to that end, do we know where these recent infections are coming from?
Dr. Taylor is able to tell us about whether they're directly related to the school or whether they would require contact tracing to take place among the school community. In other words, if they were related to an ongoing sporting event, he would be told. If they're related to, if anybody was in school right now, then Dr. Taylor would be told it's somebody in the blah, blah, blah building or class. So commence contact tracing, or the town would do it for us, or the, you know, state public health department would do it for us. So we don't get sort of individual level detail, but we do get school related or not. Is that correct, Scott? Am I explaining that correctly?
I'm expected to be contacted if there's any, any relationship between my, the infection and my student body. We had a couple of cases, situations involving siblings of our athletes. We had two cases which I was contacted about that.
I mean, we definitely.
So we do, we do find out different information, like in which age group those infected belong to, or, you know, in what areas of town or stuff like that.
Yeah, you saw, I mean, you saw Gail's announcement that she said that recently one of the groups involved male teenagers and and Scott got information about whether, what extent they were connected with the school community. So we do get sort of very broad information like that, so that Scott could institute contact tracing if, if school activities were involved.
I see. But I mean, beyond that, I would think that just people of a similar age are going to be likely to be, you know, potentially infecting each other. Just the fact that they don't perhaps go to our schools shouldn't, shouldn't negate the possibility that they have an impact on our schools, right?
Sure, great. I do want to say I appreciate that. I understand from, that rec is requiring masks during sporting, sports activities, at least in some of the cases. I know for a fact that they're requiring masks during flag football. And even that's one place where kids from throughout the community mix on a regular basis. So I do appreciate that the rec is being very careful about that. I saw, who, Darcy, yes, there you go.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I do, one of the I thought most interesting things that came out of me attending that Middlesex meeting was the fact that nobody is using some consistent set of criteria to make these decisions. I, I just, I find that absolutely fascinating that each district is being left to their own devices on this. I do think it's worth maybe taking a look at the criteria that other districts are using and to see if we have made ours onerously restrictive. That if this spike that we're seeing in Highland Park wouldn't have been related to any of our school, schoolchildren or students if it would have been possible if we had different criteria that are working other places, right? Because the state does now have a dashboard of spreads within districts. I mean, that's like a dashboard that they're maintaining. And what data seems to be showing, you know, in multiple stories that I've read or multiple reports that I've read is that schools aren't really serving as super spreader places, right? That, no, it's not true that kids can't spread it, or that kids are immune, or kids are, you know, whatever. You know, kids can get it, kids can spread it, absolutely. But still, across the country, where schools are being careful, where everyone's wearing masks, where all the proper protocols are being put in place, it does not seem like schools are super spreaders. So maybe our, about our criteria do need to be, you know, again, in in lieu of the county or the state or the federal level, doing what I think they should be doing and it being incumbent upon us, it may be worth it in the next week or two to take a look at that criteria that we've set and see if it is particularly onerous and if we may want to switch to a criteria that other districts seem to be using that is allowing the schools to open on some limited basis and still keep everybody safe.
I agree, and I think that is going to be the, the subject of discussion at an upcoming leadership meeting.
On Thursday.
Yeah. I, my impression from the, the Middlesex County Board's presidents I've spoken to, which is not many yet, is that folks are just adopting the state guidelines, the Board of Health guidelines, State Department of Health guidelines, which just say what we, what we talked about. That in the event of community spread, the district shall work with the public health authorities, you know, whereas there are numbers suggested for, for infections within the school. You know, if there's two infections in a classroom, then do X if your county, if your area is in the red zone, you know, yada, yada, yada. But when it comes to community spread, yes, they've given us no guidance. So further discussion might be warranted. Rob Magaziner, was it you that had your hand down?
Yeah, I would just say, I, I am really happy that this group led by Scott and, and his various teams have identified a set of standards and have stuck with it and have remained a little bit on the conservative side during this period. That doesn't mean that we have to stay with that forever. And we should listen to the science. We should listen to the data that comes out. And we should make our own decision going forward. But I think that in terms of trying to keep the students and the parents and the staff healthy, that has clearly been the top priority. And, and I think that that was the right thing to do out of the gate. It's still October the 12th. So we need to keep that in mind. I know it's difficult. I know it's tough out there. But the, the main emphasis was keeping the community safe. And I think that was the right thing to do. So.
Well, I was just going to mention in case people are curious that you know, we're very unhappy that New Jersey didn't come out with, you know, more guidance for the districts about this issue. But one of the few states that did was Hawaii. And the guidelines that they came out with are within 10% of what we're using.
In terms of community spread or community outbreaks?
Yeah, in terms of cases per day as, as a, as a percentage of population, their, their standard is maybe 10% higher than ours for shutting down the schools. So I think if, if New Jersey had come out with statewide standards, there's a good chance that it would have been very close to what we're using right now.
And I think that's probably not accidental, given the expertise of which we made use in adopting the standard we adopted. You know, it was, it didn't just, just for people's information, it didn't just come out of the, the brilliant brains of the central leadership team committee or the core committee. You know, experts were consulted without going into a lot of details. Okay, any other comments before I, we handed over to public comment, which I see, I, I didn't notice before the agenda went out that it was inadvertently omitted from the agenda, but we will have another public comment period. Anyone? No. Okay. Final public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Please don't forget to say your name and your address or your affiliation if you're a student. I'll give you guys in the public a few minutes to get your virtual hands raised or turn on your video cameras and wave at us. I see Rebecca Hirsch, please.
Hi, this is like long old news at this point, so sorry to rehash this, but I just want to make sure we're not confusing five days a week of in-person instruction with the requests that I've heard at this meeting, which is just five days a week of instruction at all. There was some like defensiveness on the board, like no one's providing five days a week of instruction. That's completely not true. Plenty of districts are not in person, but they are providing, you know, hybrid models or all remote. Some are providing five days in person, but I don't think that anyone in this meeting has called for that. So I just, you know, and then, and if we, if we don't provide five days a week of instruction for all students and we only provide it to the remote only students, that creates a real disparity between the two groups of kids, you know, depending on what parents are able to manage. So I just feel like the focus needs to be on five days a week of instruction, whether or not it's virtual or in person. That's all. And plenty, and plenty of districts do do that. So that's all.
Right, I hear that. I mean, I do, I am curious to know more as we move forward about how other districts are handling hybrid kids on their days off. Well, I, I, yeah, I mean, you and I have discussed this offline. And as Dr. Taylor said, you know, some districts are in a different position. They have different technology. They have better technology. They're wealthier. They have a better match between the number of remote teachers and the number of remote students. There's all kinds of reasons why it can be very difficult for a district. But I'm sure that as we continue through this process, we will continue to look at how other districts are potentially able to offer five days a week instruction to their hybrid kids, meaning synchronous instruction to their hybrid kids on their at-home days.
Right. I mean, you know, I can't argue with whatever the space constraints are, but you know, if kids are home, they should be getting instruction.
Right, right, I, right. I hear that point. I am sure we will continue to assess whether that is possible. Because you're right, other districts are doing it and perhaps it's just not possible for us. And it is not possible for us at this moment, I will say.
Right.
I don't want to give anybody false hope, but I am confident that we will continue to assess.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Rebecca. Other public commenters. Wait a minute here for folks to pipe up. All right, I'd like to move that we adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
I have a quick question before we adjourn.
I'm so sorry.
Are, are we, are we not providing five-day remote right now?
We are, but when we, when we moved to hybrid, the students who choose to come in person would not be getting synchronous instruction for the entirety of the two days when they're out of school. So in other words,
Okay.
So, right, so hy-, so hybrid students who come to school two days a week would get two days a week of in-person full day, well, half-day instruction like everybody else. Everybody would get one day of virtual instruction on Wednesdays synchronous for the entirety of the shortened school day. And then for the other two days, our hybrid students at home would be getting mostly asynchronous instruction. Although Dr. Taylor, and I'm grateful for this, has, has committed to arranging for Paris to have check-ins with the hybrid students on their at-home days, but it would not be sort of four hours with breaks of consistent live instruction.
But that's just for kindergarten through third grade, correct?
That's for anybody who is hybrid in the elementary schools, I believe, primary and elementary. In the, in the middle school and the high school, I believe that when hybrid students are at home, we are considering, I'm not sure if it's fully decided yet, we are considering live streaming instruction from the classroom for those students. But for kids zero to five, to grade five on their off, hybrid students on their at-home days will be getting asynchronous instruction with some intermittent synchronous time, including, I believe, specials, possibly a morning meeting for some of the students. I'm not, I'm not sure of all the details, but there would not be a straight.
Right. But that's, that's not the case as of right now. Right now, we're providing five days of remote instruction.
Yes, when all the kids are out of school, yes.
Okay, I wasn't clear just because of the last comment. So I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding what we're currently doing.
Right, right. This, I think that was aimed at when we go back on Monday.
I see. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, I, anybody else have comments? I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut anybody off. No? Okay, I would like to move to adjourn the meeting.
A second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Aye.
Thanks so much. Bye-bye.